Good to see everybody out there. My name is Eddie Flores, Board President, School Board. I'd like to welcome everybody to our monthly meeting. Our regular board meeting, 28th of 15. At six, it's uh, so one. Will you please call.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mrs. Montenegro.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Dr. Diaz.
Here.
And Mr. McHale.
Here.
Will you please stand up and join me for the prayer. Told you we could try.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the seat of the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of our recognition of our united culture.
Okay, thank you. I um, I told you someone to help guide me if I go astray here. So please, pardon my first official name as president. Next on the agenda is the approval of our board reorganization. We um, we can do it, finish at the last board meeting because of the tie. So it'll be first on our agenda. At this time, I will ask for nominations for the office of Vice President.
Mr. President, I make a nomination to nominate Mike McMillan as Vice President.
So noted. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Diaz, seconded. I have any nominations?
Eddie, um, Mr. President. I nominate, I want to nominate myself for Vice President.
Okay, so, how do you know what she might, Mr. Khan? No, I'm trying to remember how we did this. So, do I have a second? I have a second nomination. So what I would do first is, I will vote on the nominations of Mr. McMillan. Okay. So. The motion for is to nominate Mr. McMillan for the office of Vice President. Do I have any discussion?
I would like to discuss your opinion of the question. I um, I think Patrick and um, options that I just wanted to take. I um, I've actually talked more about this. But um, I think he would have full control of three assets and uh, I, I think part of him in um, in Mike's case, it's he's just an investment. I think it's nice to have a dual support. Um, but I also, I mean, I don't think that he would want, but I do appreciate a lot of people.
Thank you. I too echo of Dr. Diaz's comments. Like I discussed in the last meeting, I appreciate the willingness of Mr. McMillan to be the president for two years in a row. He has been a great leader of the board. And um, but I see Patrick's point of view as well and he wanted to participate in, in the office of, of the board because he's been on the board for a while as well. And I see his point as well. And part of Diaz said, we're grateful that both of you want to, you know, take part in this office and continue with the direction we're going. So either way, we can't go wrong. I just want both of you to know that. I, as a member, appreciate all of you, especially you two, wanting to be Vice President. Any discussion?
I, I feel, and we have another position to fill too, so. It's not like, just go home and see.
Okay, so, I have a motion and I have a second for Mr. McMillan. All those in favor for Mr. McMillan as Vice President signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Closed? No?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. McMillan, congratulations, for Vice President. Thank you. Next on the agenda is nominations for Secretary.
Mr. President, I move to nominate Pastor Khan for Secretary.
I have a motion to nominate, Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
Second.
Now a second, or do I have a please? Any discussion? Any more nominations?
Sorry.
Good. See no other nominations? Move to the end of nominations right now. I have a motion and a second for Mr. Khan to be the Secretary for School Board. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You guys, congratulations, Patrick. Alright, thank you. Next on the agenda is a review, approval of your minutes for March 18th, 2019 regular meeting. Here's another chance to let those over. I um, correct, is any, any discussion?
Mr. Flores, I emailed Mrs. Hernandez with a few corrections and I think she uploaded those into um.
Alright, I'll ask for a motion for approval. I saw, Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
Second.
Now a second, Dr. Diaz. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, March 18th, 2019 work session, review and approval of your minutes. Do I have a motion for approval? So, Mr. McMillan, I'll ask for a second.
Second.
Mr. Khan, second. Any discussion? Saying, all those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item four, consideration and approval of the agenda.
Motion.
Dr. Diaz, is there any motion, or is I have a second?
Okay.
Is there any in the regular second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Should I be saying that in the regular meeting, the motion passes?
Yes.
Trying to hammer it out?
Okay, next, non-action items.
Just to adjourn him from the board.
Okay. Information and presentations, non-action items. First one up is Mr. Alvedez and Flori Pastat, or Tomer. Mr. Alvedez, if you would, sir.
Mr. President, excuse the ground, members of the board. Uh, before you, I just want to go ahead and go real quickly uh, over our calendar selection and how we go about doing our calendar selection. What we do is we ask for a representative from each school site. Uh, as each of the school sites have their constituents that different people want to see different uh, calendars put out there. We've had some little doody that's happened. Where there's things that are kind of hard and not really realistic. And then we've got, you know, similar calendars where they go back and they end up working on their calendars. If you look at that second page, um, these are what I consider the calendar essentials. Uh, of course, there's the non-negotiables on the top. Uh, the two built-in calendar days, those are automatic in there. We don't use them, we don't use them, but we do have them. Uh, that's built into the 178 calendar days. Uh, we have to have 180 new contract days. We have to have five non-instructional days for staff. One mandatory work day. Two parent-based teacher conferences, and that is only for secondary. While at the elementary level, there is a three-day. You have 13 common planning half-days, and that has been negotiated uh, through the union. That's a collective bargaining agreement that we've already negotiated with the union. So that's our agreement. So the items that we actually can't change through the calendar meetings, would be start dates and end dates, uh, holidays. What would affect student attendance? And what I mean by that is we discuss in our calendar meetings, if we end up putting, uh, per se, if we end up putting the the common planning days on a Friday, do we think that we're going to get the kids to show up? Those are some things that we look at as far as student attendance. Of course, we want our student attendance to be the highest possible. Uh, another factor that we've looked at in years past was the K3 plus program, but we're not uh, doing that this year. Uh, and that would have affected our start date. Uh, what days for common planning? Uh, traditionally, we've had a Wednesday as a common planning day. Uh, the principals and, and the administration has talked to the, to the building reps and the building reps really wanted to keep it on Friday. So that's what we ended up doing is keeping it on Friday. And of course, parent-teacher conferences. This one got kicked around quite a bit. Uh, do we have it in Wednesday, on Wednesday? Do we have it on Friday? Do we have it on Tuesday? Uh, what would be the best day to get attendance? Because of course, we end up seeing that parents sometimes will say, oh, well, it's just parent-teacher conference, so let's just make it a three-day weekend. Uh, what we've noticed is that there's really no difference. Your parents that are going to show up to check on their kid are the ones that are going to show up and check on their kids. So we really haven't seen any difference. Uh, the calendar pretty much makes itself. And what I mean by that is, if you go ahead and you go all the way back to the end date, we don't ever want to go past Memorial Day, which happens on May 15th. So if you go ahead and you work your 178 instructional days back from there, pretty much projects where you have to start your school year. After that, then we can go ahead and play around with our. Uh, there was a lot of discussion as far as Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Veterans Day. Uh, when we take our breaks, uh, there was one calendar that was out there that ended up uh, coinciding with Western's calendar so that we could have that same time off. And so what we basically essentially come down to are three very distinct calendars that our constituents can go ahead and vote on. With that voting, uh, a really nice thing is, this isn't like a electoral college vote where one candidate can go ahead and garnish uh, a vote. Whereas, you know, like Sixth Street, they would only get a small vote, they would get one more vote. So everybody's vote is taken into account. And uh, calendar, it was calendar A, it was three calendars, A, B, and C. Calendar A was a calendar that overwhelmingly ended up getting voted on. And so what you have before you is pretty much the set calendar, with the exception of uh, Mr. Trump and I have spoken. With 178 calendar days, if we look at contact hours, we're actually a little bit over on contact hours. So we wouldn't be able to go ahead and fit in a couple more professional development days. That is something that is being kicked around. It wouldn't interfere at all with our instructional time because we're already over on our instructional time. So with our, with our day, uh, the day actually has to be 6.25 hours and most of our schools are going 6.6 or more. So it wouldn't affect our school break. But that is uh, that is approval, and that's the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvedez, I appreciate you presenting and I know that you're talking to Mr. Brown, every school has a representative.
Yes, sir.
This meeting, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And, and I know I almost see us not approving this, but I, I should bring to my concerns as I did last year.
Sure.
You know, I really wish that who have loved that celebrating Martin Luther King Day and Veterans Day, you know, uh, a lot of other communities, businesses, schools.
Yes, sir.
They, they celebrate both of them, if not at least one of them. Is there, is there a reason that they don't want to do?
What ends up, what ends up happening, Mr. President, is if you, if you end up taking a day, kind of like what I was speaking earlier, you'll have to take it from somewhere else.
Sure.
So that was, that was one of the, one of, we did have some calendars that had Martin Luther King's Day on Christmas. We also did have a calendar that had Veterans Day on New Year's. Uh, they had that opportunity, but as through negotiations and talking to the constituents from the schools, uh, a lot of them wanted to have a full Thanksgiving break or they wanted to have a full week for spring break. So, we didn't want to end up breaking those up because then, again, looking at attendance, you end up breaking up, let's say, uh, you do a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, the kids probably aren't going to come on that Martin Luther King. So those were some ideas that got kicked around and that's how we ended up incorporating what the calendar is.
No, I understand that, I understand the majority, you know, spokes. It's just my, my comments.
But there were, there were people that put that up.
There are, and there are important, you know.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, very much.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, I guess I would just ask, so if you didn't add those two, you would just push back everything like two days earlier?
We could actually, we could actually squeeze those in because those would be non-instructional days and our contact hours are already over. So we could squeeze that in. It would, it would be maybe a half day so that we could go ahead and work.
I see, and we're already up to August 1st for new employee orientation and then down to Memorial Day, so it's.
And that was the one thing that nobody wanted to do. Because I said, going back to the argument that Mr. Flori said, we could go ahead and incorporate those other days, but of course, then you're pushing your son back.
Yeah, right. Well, I appreciate that we have a full fall break, for sure. I think that's important. And um, I appreciate that Christmas break is not almost a full three weeks.
The other thing that ends up happening in the calendar as well is that as the dates shift around, then it, it also makes it different for, okay, well, we're going to be starting, you know. Everybody wants to have so many days off before Christmas. So we end up sometimes incorporating a Friday or a Thursday, depending upon where the holiday falls.
Now, once they're back in the middle of the week, we're good.
Yes, yes. And, and of course, like I had said earlier, we need definitely looking into the timeframes. Uh, the other thing that uh, if you do approve a calendar, they'll be put in there, but uh, on the calendar that's there, you're looking at 46 for 46 days. We should have roughly 45 days for uh, the nine weeks. So you would have uh, October 25th would be your first nine weeks. Uh, December 25th would be uh, your second nine weeks. Uh, March 13th would be your third nine weeks. And then of course, the last one, January 22nd. And they all, they, you can never get on the 45, 45, 45, but you're looking at 46 days, 42, 47, and 45. So they're roughly, as close as, as close as is possible. All right?
How about Justin?
Yes, please, sir.
Um, Mr. Al, um, Mr. Alvaro is on the, so it's a full week for fall break and spring break and then was uh, do we have a, uh, was that a difference this week or this school year that we only have a three-day fall break? Is that in Thanksgiving? Is that something we had? This year?
The year before, right? How about the year before?
Year before, they had just three days. And then Thanksgiving is just the, the three days, right?
Right. One of the calendars had a full, so Thanksgiving, that's all. Some others have. The other thing too, so that everybody can understand, we always come to one calendar. And, and the funny part about that is because as people start to look at that, everybody wants to have the full one here, the full one there. And so uh, we kind of do have to think out of the box to get three distinct calendars. But the calendar kind of makes itself, not a whole lot.
I uh, I do have one question. So the common planning days traditionally have been for elementary only. Is there a plan to incorporate that for secondary? I know that was a proposal.
There was discussion, but that ended up, uh, the, the union had talked about that as far as collective bargaining agreement situation, but that had some good rock. So for this year.
Dr. Diaz, unless collective bargaining changes that. That could be one of the proposals we're bringing forward as part of the CBA process. And maybe you're willing to listen to.
And I guess for me, uh, you know, I hear this constant thought about horizontal and vertical alignment, but I don't see a lot of opportunity to work within that timeframe to accomplish that.
What we've done in the past.
And we have enough contact time right now.
Right. And we're good with the contact. What we've done in the past is, is we, as far as principals go, we've been able to go ahead and say, good, after the car, I'm going to go ahead and make sure you guys go to the high school. So, middle school and the high school can go ahead and plan together at that time. So we've been able to do that. Go ahead and say that thing that.
So when do you see the CBA bargaining happening prior to next year?
Right, supposed to, according to the agreement. So we had some initial meetings with them about some possibilities to discuss. And one of the things that we presented to them as well is looking at the additional instructional time we have. Do we go ahead and allow some other early releases strictly for that? Uh, Mr. Brown and I have talked with a couple of our instructional coaches and Terry Jameson to look at how we could facilitate more grade level and vertical special development. So we're, we're looking at everything. Uh, a lot of it was put back because of waiting for the budget and what was eventually going to happen with calendar and extended school year. Um, and the other conversations we've had, um, Cliff was delayed on their calendar. Um, I just got the rough draft of it today from another whole game because of all the budget and information. We're trying to do some common PD days for the entire district with them. So it's on a four-day week and looking at how they incorporate it. Do we match them with some of the common planning times? And allow them to do some PD times with our teachers in town? So we do like grade three PD or common planning, so we know what's going across the district. So there's still some moving parts on this yet, depending on what happens with collective bargaining and what we're looking at trying to do as a district to prepare our teachers as best we can.
So if we approved this and then that came out of collective bargaining, would that be effective 1920 or 2021?
It would probably be effective the year the collective bargaining agreement would be approved. We're carried over last year's collective bargaining agreement for this year because there was a choice not to collective bargaining. There was a proposal on the table, they got tabled, and it was on the common planning time. So I have a feeling that's going to be one of those. And then, the other issues that have been brought up by the union are these PD issues, exactly like you guys are talking about, how to get that cross-grade and vertical alignment. And as well as all the trainings we have to do. Mr. Brown and I have talked immensely about how to get all the regular trainings in at the beginning of the year. Um, the other calendars that I saw that was presented had teachers coming back on July 31st, which I think we would have been ran out of town if we would have looked at that as a possible proposal. But I think looking at some of these things with all the added requirements and with the budget coming in, and then there's the added requirement this year that came through the budget of current tech ed training for our teachers that teach in that program. So, trying to get all these with a reasonable budget and not impacting the calendar. There's still a lot of parts out there we're going to address with our staff and hopefully not necessarily have to do everything through collective bargaining, but hopefully reach with a agreement with the union. This is what we're going to go as a, as a district and, and make that commitment to them to make sure that we can do these things.
So that would be 2019, 2020, or?
For next school year would be it, because it has to be impacted. Anytime for the collective bargaining agreement in place, they usually start at the very next school year, so.
So, Mr. President, Mr. Cliff, so we would be looking at potentially Cliff's calendar for next month?
I actually will look at Cliff's calendar possibly on a possible special board meeting for the budget, depending on what's happening. Because I gave a timeline that we'd like to have it because depending on, all the moving parts with the budget too with her is we gotta have all schools' calendars approved when she submits her budget. So, it's going to be more than my thing on the, on the board meeting with the budget that we're doing and that's the timeframe I gave Cliff to respond to.
You got your way, Mr. McMillan.
What's that?
Any more comments? Thank you, Mr. Alvedez.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, John or Alicia, there?
Welcome. I'm John and this is my wife, Alicia. We just wanted to thank you for taking a few minutes and inviting us to come and share about the program that we have started and what we're trying to do. Also wanted to thank all of you who we've already met with or talked with about this program and who already meant support and encouragement and resources, so. So I'm just going to share a little bit about why we decided to start this program. We're calling it Grant County College Day. And it grew out of our love for our college experience and the way that it changed our lives. We recognize that college isn't for everybody, but for us, it is a great experience and it blessed our lives and blessed the lives of our kids and our family. And so, we moved here about seven years ago. Honestly, we thought we'd stay a couple of years and move on. We really grew to love the community and people here. So once we decided we're, we're going to be staying, we looked around the community and wanted to find an opportunity to help in one area that we felt was needed, was providing opportunities for those that want to go to college to be able to know the path they need to go down and have the resources available to them. We have six kids, so we're pretty vested in wanting good education and good opportunities for young people in the area. And we figured we're going to be doing this with our kids. We want them to go to college. When we're there at college, we go by and take the kids and they get to see what universities are like, especially when we go back to, you know, our alma mater. And so, we thought if we're going to be doing it for our kids, we should open that up to the community and see if we can help take some other kids along with us. Again, we don't want to um, take away from anything anybody else is doing, whatever the schools are already doing, whatever other programs are available to kids. That's great, we don't want to step on anybody's toes. We just want to be a resource for kids that want to go to college and might not know how. That's why we decided to start the grant community college. We're just going to talk a little bit about what we're doing and what we want to do.
Right. So, we do have six kids and we are very busy. So this is one thing that we felt very passionate about and wanted to start. And so, to start it, we had to just kind of jump in and make, make it happen, make it start. There's lots that we envision, if you look at the different things we want to be able to do. We're certainly not doing all of those right now. But we wanted to start somewhere. And so where we decided to start was maybe with the end in mind. So usually you start at the beginning, you start with kindergarten, we work our way up. Um, but where we felt the gap was, was giving good quality help for kids to get into college and so that's kind of where we started. So, the very first thing we started with is ACT prep. So we started offering that to the schools. Um, Mr. Coker has been awesome in, in allowing us to use the school, the high school. Uh, Mr. Brown has been great in working with him and allowing us the resources, the facilities, to be able to offer these to the kids. At the beginning of the year, or I guess it wasn't quite the meeting, it's a mess of a place. Western decided that they were not going to offer the dual enrollment course for kids at the high school, the college success course, the college 101, which is kind of where our program is all about. And so they came to me and asked me if I'd be willing to teach that course. And I did not have a master's degree, so I cannot teach a dual enrollment course. But I offered to teach it, I just go with my time. I teach one class a day and we're trying to help the kids. Hopefully next semester we'll get some kids that are really dedicated and coming to college. Working on it. Um, but it's still me teaching that class to figure out this program a little bit better too and how to consider and how to implement it and how to really help the kids. Um, so one thing that we focus on in our class and that we focus on and the resources that we offer, um, is how to research a college, how to research their admissions, um, how to figure out what your dual enrollment courses here are going to look like at a university that you're going to go to. Hopefully, they all align in New Mexico and it'll be a lot easier going forward with that, but not all kids are going to stay in New Mexico. And so helping them understand that process and what they're looking for and how to approach that. And in working with the school counselors and people at the school, I think if they're all in the same boat and working with Mr. Clapp, a visiting with him, that hopefully we can get these figured out and develop these skills and give a lesson to them. So that when they know they are actually taking dual enrollment courses, that will be helpful for the path that they're choosing, not just thrown into something because that's what they're going to take. That's not very helpful, but there's better ways. So ACT prep is one big thing that we've started. And we've, we've done an evening where they did, or a Saturday where they came with a full test. They got that experience. And then we also took different evenings and we focused on different areas of the test. Those kids, there was a test, an ACT test just last weekend, and so we have kind of a group of some kids. Last two tests, I'm really. But I think the word is getting out more and more. And so. And so, any opportunities that you all have or schools have to highlight what we're able to do and what we provide, so it'd be great. And one other area that we started and I did give you all a calendar and that started in March because that's when we finally got our heads on a little bit better. Like I said, we jumped into it and we're learning as we go, but we know if we didn't start, it would never happen. The hardest part is just starting. So, we jumped in a lot of times, it's two of us, but we do have a board, um, but that's kind of all it is. We invited the community to come out and everybody's like, yes, great idea, run with it, go. And we're like, well, we are, but it's hard to do it by ourselves. So, we can only grow as fast as the community helps us grow. So, as far as reaching out to the the schools, we reached out to all of the principals, um, the kindergarten principals and at the very beginning of the school year just to see if this was something, um, that they would be interested in having help. So, for those younger grades, our vision is to have outside help, go in and help tutor some kids who are falling behind or help bring them up. And that was something that all the principals were like, yes, great, we're ready to bring you in now. And I'm like, well, I'm pretty upset to be amongst all of us. So, if we can get, um, not just kids excited, but if we can get parents and community members excited to come and help with the program, we can make things better. We're doing our best to do what we can and saying we do have six kids and trying to meet at least a couple of times a month. Where everybody's invited to come, not just ACT prep, but we do different activities, life skills.
Finance.
Finance is tonight, actually, the FATS night. Don't even know who is hosting that and they're offering that for kids to come and learn how to sign up for that. So, that's tonight. We have one coming up that's for parents that want to learn how to take control of their child's education, keep them to life. And at that night, we'll provide games and activities for the kids who are parents who go to the school.
Where are where are your meetings located?
So, a lot of times at the high school. I teach in room two-two, so that's where they're at. Our district has been very, very receptive and it makes it easier because this is where our kids go. So, it's kind of been our focus. We would like to branch out, reach out. I have reached out to Bayer. They weren't quite as receptive. I went to their high school and they're like, yeah, cool, we're already doing this. Well, I don't think they're doing very well. It's okay. Well, I just thought we're extra, we're there if kids need it. They just like they need more. And that's where we're at. We understand there's cancers and this, you know, but I've talked with the counselors and there's no way that they can adequately help all those kids at the high school with two cancers. Again, some of those kids who need more one-on-one help, one more to give them that, to me, that's what we want. So, yeah. You know, there's kids that probably they might want to go to college, but they don't have the homes, you know how to make that happen. They might be the first-time college holders and the families, which is kind of the nature of where we live. Like various, a whole range, but we want to help everyone. That's what we're doing again. If you want to get a calendar, I can show some of the things I'm doing. And then hopefully next year we'll have our head on a little bit better, to our shoulders and have a little more awareness.
I have I have a couple of questions. I appreciate what you're doing. So, the meetings are at high school? Is that what you have on that?
Uh, mostly, yes. Tonight is at the college. We've had a couple at the college, so we try and.
So, looking at the calendar, when? And oh, two-part question. Can you just jump in whenever you you find out that you want to join or you have to wait for the beginning of the semester?
No, it's open admission. They can come to whatever you can make.
Now, who who can you lead to freshmen or sophomores or?
So, most of the time, I think the activity will determine what kind of kids, what age wants to go. Next year, we do, I did find this really neat program. But it goes all the way from K to twelve and it's exactly like counseling for helping kids get to college. And it's exactly what our program's doing. So, I'm hoping that we can have specific evenings where K year and the seniors, this is going to be here more frequently. But the reason why we left off location is because we don't know the time where it would be. So, we send those out. We can have kids sign up. We had a lot of kids sign up when we got to go to the career day and we went through the ninth grade orientation and that's where we had a lot of people. We've had different activities. We've had this big grand opening type thing and we had a few good stuff. But the where we get the most is when we can look at those orientation papers. And they sign up, we send out emails or some text messages and let them know when and where.
I'm glad that we're accommodating the meeting as far as high scoring where else you might need, we can hopefully accommodate you.
But to go back to your question, we've had all grades at the high school and even a few from the middle school.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, so right now, like I said, we're starting with the end in mind. So, high school is typically the age group that we focus on, but we do have, and that's extended, some middle school in grade students that are coming.
I don't mind. My son's a sophomore. We're we're talking about the ACT.
Cinemarway?
Yeah, I went to, I I I really went to. My next question and I'll pass on to the board. Do you help with student athletes?
Because they come.
What I'm saying is, if a student wants to play baseball or basketball or whatever, will you assist them in trying to find a avenue for that? Because I know it's a tough job recruiting, getting recruited, getting seen. And I know some of the camps we've gone to, you know, they'll they'll tell us, you know, a tenth of the GPA point will reduce or increase a thousand colleges, you know, they'll accept you. But I think we hear it from other people as well, how important the GPA is, but we're looking for that sort of.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't speak as a parent.
Yeah, and we try to, um, shore up what parents have told their kids. They come to our program and some of them said, that's what my mom said, or that's what my dad said. So, we do try to support that search that. I don't think we'll be able to help it by recruiting, but with the academics, absolutely. And emphasizing the importance of, you know, a decent score on the ACT is going to make getting that scholarship offer so much easier. Absolutely, we want to help. Also with tutoring, if, you know, student athletes or anybody is just struggling in their classes, we're there to help offer tutoring help as well. We want to, we want to help the kids in whatever way they see help.
Do you guys charge?
No, so we actually met with the city manager when we first came from doing this and he was so excited. He said, nobody comes to us with education in mind. They come to us for sports and they come to us for other things. This is the first time I ever had someone come to me with an education. So, he gave us a very nice rant to get us started. And with that, we're using some of that money to take the kids on a college tour on the twenty-sixth, the Friday. Again, it's where the high schools come in handy and then helping us to get a bunch of things, but we're providing the funds for that.
Why appreciate what you guys are doing and that's?
And your son can take my class next semester and he can look up how he can, what scholarships he can apply for. He can research that stuff and I can, I know Guy, they have to do a lot of research on their own because I can't, I can't do everybody's school at the same time, but I can show them, this is what you need to know, go find it out. If you have questions, I'll help you. So, if he's looking to get a scholarship to play sports, then definitely I will say, okay, let's look it up.
Yes. I want to say hopefully we'll be there in a second for your next ACT draft. But, um, thank you. Any any other comments?
Well, I just want to thank you guys. I know Alicia and John Beck personally, and they've just been awesome for our community and they they give back in so many different ways. So, they're, I can attest to, their hands are very full. But I think I got their first thing to come on board and you guys know I'm I'm an active volunteer too and I've got a daughter that's going to be in seventh grade. And so, if I need to do like the middle school tutoring or if I can help you in the middle school, I mean, then even in elementary, I'm more than happy. I just, I wasn't sure what you were looking for yet, but, um, I I want to support you guys and I really, really appreciate this. Okay, perfect. Anybody else want to? Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, thank you for investing in our students and for staying in Silver City and not going. So, I personally wanted to thank you for that. And I also noticed in there where you have creating a resume and personal profile. Not only is ACTs also important, but also I I I'm on there a couple of boards where I'm on the scholarship committee and we get these scholarship applications and what's real attractive to the applicant is the portfolio where they have their extracurricular activities and what they participated in in high school, which makes them very suitable to to make that scholarship. I I I know there's tons of money out there and just as a student, I'll go get it just to get it. So, I I thank you for for doing what you're doing and if I can be of any help on a class or you just let me know and I can come and talk to the students and enable that scholarship or what, what's your inwards or whoever looks at the applications, what do you look at? So, I can help contribute to that as well.
You bring us out my class to do resumes and I should have to come in before. Someone's in the background, oh, come on. I don't care. I'm excited I can care more than what the students care, but I care and I want to.
It's so good. I I just wanted to say thank you. Um, I think it's, uh, a lot of us will say we want to help, want to do this, want to do that, or so. Everybody's schedule is crazy. I don't have six kids and I, because I, I thank you for doing that. Um, and I love that you guys are the ones stepping up to action. Because a lot of us have good intentions without the action of it for myself. I talked about this a long time ago and I love the idea and I I, it's like we all said, we all want to throw our kids in there, but, you know, diving in to be part of the solutions is the hard part. I really, uh, I really appreciate it and, uh, I, we've got to find ways to help with the support, you know, whether it's, you know, financially or whether it's the time or whatever. So, I think in the community, we kind of have to step up because it's where you have someone walking in saying, I want to do this for free because I have good intentions and I'm best in the community and we want to stay here and, uh, we have six kids, but we'll figure it out. So, and, uh, I I just see, uh, I I just see your impressions from your kids in the classroom to you guys being around and present. Just today, Molly was in the classroom giving a presentation and she's, Avery always asks me really good questions. I don't ever have a good answer. So, but I think I gave him one that made, it it made sense. So, I I mean, I think it's a matter of getting these kids thinking and having that forward thinking to ask the critical questions because you don't know what you don't know. So, I really, uh, I might take more time. I just, I appreciate it. I just, part of me, I look at this, I mean, gosh, it's my guilty conscience. I do have that email. I really, I really appreciate your time, really so much and the contribution to, I think it's hard. We all, um, come in and say, oh, we want to help and it's when our kids are around. But I think it's hard to be there consistently when you're not just taking care of your kids, you're taking care of the community of kids and that's what this board is about. I appreciate you kind of pushing us.
Well, thank you, kids.
I circled these.
I would agree with, uh, you know, everybody's comments. I think it's a great program. Thank you for stepping up. Who my oldest has has participated in some of the events and, um, the activities that you've done and I appreciate it. He took the ACT this, uh, last Saturday, so I know it's going to benefit him, um, having had that experience that you all have provided. Hopefully, we can continue to grow this. I think we've had kind of bits and pieces in our in our high school of of kind of the college life course. And I'd like to see us continue to build on that and, um, you know, kind of develop a track that's, you know, we're, not everybody wants to go to college, but those that do, you know, this is going to give you the the map to to get there. And if we can continue building on that and then it's just, as you said, you know, kind of maybe go from the the endpoint on down into the junior high and elementary kids. And I think that's, uh, a great way to get started and, uh, hopefully it's something that we can continue to build on at the high school and kind of move from there. So, thank you all very much.
And I don't think any of you need to have a guilty conscience because you're here. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, thank you. Next, um, this is Kim Mark.
So, I'm starting with a little bit more information about the position for the new chair. So, I've got an updated, um, draft, a draft description that I did just after the panel. After we talked about this, um, last month, there there were, there were a lot of questions, but, um, but there's like something I answered to get to see to this Rob's question. The question was, what grade level do we need to put at this position? We've talked a lot about who should have this and what position district wide will kind of help us flush out where do we need to go from here? So, rather than trying to pinpoint, well, it's just going to be an A ability or it's just going to be certain grade levels. I'd like to have this position available to K twelve and find out what is the need and then decide what direction we want to go there and there. It feels like after doing the research, this position really needs to be a teacher or a service provider with another layer of educational experience. To be able to provide, I'm not speaking as a special ed director, now I'm speaking as a member of this district where I see the see gaps. In my work with the SAT chairs, it seems like many of the other teachers are frustrated with challenging behaviors with kids who don't have an IEP. And we have social workers and school sites and we have special ed teachers, but we don't have a lot of support for kids in the general curriculum in large classrooms where maybe they don't feel like they fit in and they're creating some issues for teachers or the students around them. And this particular position can help teachers respond to those behaviors better. So, it's not meant to be a direct support for kids. It's meant to help teachers. Because that's where, that's where I hear the greatest concern. Because I'm working with SAT chairs, I hear teachers say, I don't know what to do with these kids. I don't know what to do with those behaviors. And so, if we have a position like this, someone who can go into classrooms and really assess what's happening in the classroom, they may be able to support classroom management, may be able to to bring additional ideas to a classroom teacher to say, maybe we should try something different and bring a level of experience that has often been only for kids with IEPs. You may have thought about it a little bit a month and you may have additional questions. I'd love to take that and see if I can reach you more information. This continues to be a draft. Oh, the other question that came up was what's it going to cost? So, Michelle and I looked at the salary schedules and it looks like it could be as much as, or as a range of forty, something to seventy, sixty, seventy, depending on the level of experience, uh, level and, um, experience that they're committed to. And if they're following both of those salary schedules, it would fall in line with, or at least in the example.
So, you said it should have a licensed person, right? Did you say a teacher?
A teacher, special ed, general ed or related service provider.
Okay.
Who's already licensed for the committee, who have taken the time, put in the energy to have additional coursework or additional training in behavior management. And there are courses, college courses that present, there are also some online courses. There are some ways that we can access as a district to train our own if we have people who are interested in it. We're doing this now in our special ed department for a couple of kids, but I'd really like to see us expand. This is an opportunity for Genet.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I I do. This is horrible.
Go ahead.
So, this kind of relates to, because I know we're probably going to talk about the armed security guards too, but remember there was that other, um, isn't it the crisis intervention team that we were talking about having that? And I know you were kind of on board with that in the past meetings, but, um, just, and this is just not going to be very popular, but just last week, um, my daughter's telling me that sixth graders are talking about killing themselves. And like at a really high rate, I mean, it's just, it's just alarming, you know? And as and as a board member and as a parent, you know, it's my responsibility to let that child's mom know if I know that that's what's going on. Um, and so, my wheels just started turning, um, with this with this job. I think, um, well, I know we need to have a lot more communication in our schools with, whether it's the counselor or this person or whoever, to get to these kids because there's kids that don't even show signs. And then there's kids that do have hard home lives but are embarrassed to say. And I was just recently talking with my counselor and she said, basically, she kind of referred it to, where, how do you learn how to do hopscotch? Well, you learn from your friends. How do you learn to jump rope? Well, you learn from your friends. And so, really what what I what I feel like this is really going to boil down to is peer to peer and somehow creating safe peer group. And when I was in elementary, we did conflict resolution, like we had like conflict resoluters or something and we were like on the playground and we had like weird vests on. But our friends knew that they could come to us and we would help them do conflict mediation. We were trained, we, in elementary, elementary kids were trained conflict mediators. And and I don't know where that's gone, you know, it's been a long time. I'm not even going to say. And, and I don't know where that's gone, you know, it's been a long time. I'm not even going to say. Not as long as rest for you guys, but oh, it's up for you. So that, that was one thing that I'm just thinking, you know, I, I, we really, I think we need to get there. We need to get to where there's safe peer groups somehow. And then the other thing is I asked my daughter, well, what is, what about? And she said that Dare has come one time. And when I was in fifth grade, Dare came every Friday for a whole semester. And, and honestly, I'm not going to talk about the tobacco. I, I mean, drugs are horrible, but really I think suicide needs to be on our radar. It is something, and it's something like I have never seen before or heard before.
We should get younger and younger.
Well, my husband, that night when we were talking with my daughter, the number two killer of children five to eighteen is suicide. So I just, I mean, get me in there. If I need to be in a peer group and helping these kids to help each other, we need to do it. Because just like we want to protect them with, you know, an armed guard, we can't protect them from themselves without giving them a safe place. So this is probably a very unsportable conversation for everyone, but I think it's important.
Social, emotional learning curriculums are becoming as important as math and reading. And I proposed that we start something in the vendors, working with all the different teachers on social emotional learning curriculum embedded in the academics. And separate from this, just something that I'm passionate about, that I want to help with. Because I feel like for me, to be younger, but we can start, the more success we're going to have so that we're not faced with teenagers doing things that they're showing to their friends.
And I just, for people that didn't know, there was a girl that attempted suicide in the high school. It's not, it's been one or two months ago. Her dad was just in my office last week. She's home. They've done reconstructive surgery. But she'll never be the same.
They're not, they never will.
No. And I mean, her mom is a nurse at the hospital and her dad, her dad works with weapons. And so I mean, it's a very, it's a very sad, it's devastating. And I don't want to see my family have to go through that.
This is part of the concern because I work with, with kids with IEPs. So we are, not that we have all the answers for them, but we're more in touch with their needs than we are with the others. And they're just a percentage of the population. So how else can we make it better? How else can we teach them? I think peer groups would be a great way.
I, I think conflict mediating wasn't great. And it was just little kids. So, and I just see it kind of as like, so my son just signed up for garden club, right? So every Wednesday they go out and they do the garden. Well, it was the same kind of thing. You just ask kids, who wants to be, you know, a leader in your, in your group? And then you bring them in. I think we had a training for a couple of days. I mean, literally, we were third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders. But we did it and my friends knew to come and find us on the playground. And we had to help peer to peer. And I, I don't know where it's gone, but it just kind of, this light bulb came on. And so I feel like with this, I mean, I, I know we need it. I know we need to go in that direction. But there's so much more that, that we need to do as a district.
At least for opening the conversation about what to do, what more we need to do.
Yeah. That's all I have. That was a lot. Sorry, guys.
Okay. Mr. President, Mrs. Marchegio, I think some very good points and thoughts. And then I guess a question for Mr. Hopwood in regards to this disposition. And so my understanding is this person would also, would not only help kids individually, but would also be able to help the teachers with behavior problems in their classrooms. What are your thoughts on if this is one person and they're going to be K through twelve available? How do you envision them? You know, is there some sort of like, okay, send me an email and we'll, we'll, we'll take them as they come and take to them as, as we can or how does, do you come in?
It's going to be anything. See if this position materializes how well we see this and, and where those requests come from. It may not be enough and we may find that we have to sort of narrow it down. I feel like there's a lot of need out there that's still not answered. One person probably hasn't answered. I, I go back to younger kids because catching them young, potentially fewer problems as they get older. But I would have issues too, you know? And there's maybe a different way that this person can facilitate something I'm talking about. So maybe there's a hard open, maybe it's a release update. It's a draft. You can do a lot of needs.
Any other comments?
Do you have someone physically in mind for that position or are you just putting yours?
Not necessarily. I know a handful of people who would need this description. I don't really know what to expect from a residency posting. But I, I, I've worked with a couple of people who are certified staff in other schools or not, not certified staff in our schools who have this type of training. I know what's happening in our community and we have with U and M to help provide these kinds of inputs. But we'll be interested to see who can, that may come with them or maybe we don't know yet.
And do you want them to pay their stuff? Do you have any idea? I haven't reached out to them to reference what their salary is for their stuff.
So salaries in the, I spoke with Free Orange Show APS and their salary schedule follows there. It's not what we're talking about doing as sort of like staff. U and M has been providing oversight for us and it's, it's pretty expensive. So if we can get to a point of momentum where we're generating our own, our own district, it's accessible. There are forty hour online programs that will provide a certificate of completion that will give people another layer, a beginning layer of behavior management experience or at least education. And then to put that to work, I think we potentially can grow the work a lot more. So we're not having a higher amount of stuff. And I think that there's interest amongst staff to do something more.
I've heard a lot of uneasiness about certain behaviors or certain situations where teachers feel like they're in an uncomfortable situation because, you know, these days you lay hands on a kid and you don't do it in the appropriate manner. You know, even if it threatens the safety of twenty other kids, the, the teacher is at risk. And, and that's just kind of the nature of the times. So I, I guess in my mind, I envision this person being able to take the lead and provide some of those training for the teachers who wouldn't have the high enough experience.
That's what I'm hoping for. Thank you for going to the classroom and observe, see, this is issues classroom management. It's the issue, something with a particular child, you need something more that's best to date. They can assess that. But my last, in the fall semester, we had five new trials to special education testing for behavior. So that's a lot. And that's telling me that teachers don't have the, it's not going to worry this a lot.
One other question. Is there any resources available at Southwest REC or CES for these type of services? Or even in services for all the staff? And then if we do improve this, then maybe this person can follow up with additional training information?
So the R E C is trying to expand what they offer. And right now their expansions are about special education. They're, they're trying to provide educational diagnosis for other schools. That's again, special ed. But they would provide support and training for our staff that would have to be specialized. If the general staff could provide some support in classroom management, there's some ideas on how to challenge. And definitely they're, they're a very handy resource. I talk about probably every week, asking, oh, where do I go to get some more information about something? So I feel like that's a really strong resource for us. CES I have not explored. But I don't know why and I don't know what contract, I don't know what contract they are for.
But our conversation earlier, you know, I did speak to teachers out in the community just to see the, just how they would perceive with the help of a behavioral therapist in the classroom or just in the district. And, because I, I left with a lot of questions during the last meeting. So I just wanted to get that perceived in that conception as, okay, well, I wonder about the whole district being. I wish I could have talked to everybody, but it was just out of the community and it was procedure, fairly well. Except that would be, you know, suicide was one and some other problems. And I do remember being a conflict manager in elementary and that did perceive a lot of, as a leader with the students with any type of problem. And if we had to take anything to a further step, then it was the, the, the teacher that was involved. I don't know. Were you a conflict manager too, please? I think I remember.
I think so.
Yeah. I did. I went to him for one, one time. I'm not going to say how long ago at least, but, but that was a really great idea, actually. Mr. Hopwood, thank you for coming back a second time. Next on is Jezzo, Mr. Shane. After me at least.
Welcome. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to the board. I apologize. I have a very amazing voice. And I pass out. So Dr. Diaz, having come to the quads for us. One lesson served by. Okay, so I would, I would ask you to come back to the board and revisit on the, the four categories that we have that include the five point O G P A, our course offerings, graduation requirements, and last but not least, senior degrees. So I'm going to go ahead and go through my spiel for you guys. And of course, I'll be available for questions afterward. So as far as the five point O scale goes, the admin team has done research. We did six seven schools. Basically, we took all the four A schools that were in this state. And our findings, we do find that we're putting nine percent of the schools who offer some kind of GPA bump for those that are taking AP classes. However, what we're seeing is they're not consistent. There's nothing really consistent across the board. So some schools offer five point O scales, some offer a point two five credit bump. Some, some only offer the five point O or any kind of credit bump for AP language, pre, pre-cow. Other schools do all the AP classes, but no higher math than some do. So, right, so we, we are considering that necessarily diving in because we want to do it right. But we also want some guidance from district and also from teachers as well. But we are considering following five point O scale for all AP classes. That would be both AP Lit and Ling and AP Physics, et cetera, AP classes and AP meditation. However, this does have its own issues in talking to some students that were surveyed. They feel that National History Day is right up there with those stuff AP classes. As a matter of fact, they feel that those, that National History Day is actually better prepared than to do research papers, presentations, be able to communicate. I mean, they're interviewing people that you and I would never be by interviewing and, and stuff like that. So I mean, that's, that's just one example that we talked about. Other issues are, are just the same issues that I stated prior to students being less inclined to take any four point O classes. I fear that'll affect the GPA, all the street or bill credit courses as well. So we might see the client in that. That's a speculation, of course. I can tell you coming from a school district that did do five point O, it did hurt other programs. Not the classes that were not even considered AP or even honest in that manner. I started petitioning the board to have a class of designated as such. So they couldn't compete with getting the numbers in their classes as well. Because there was that fear, and it was much longer, but you kind of said that. But there's still that fear that that program could have cut the less kids. We are not totally against it whatsoever. We are looking for ways, I know Dr. Diaz asked, asked us to kind of look at ways to incentivize kids taking those high level classes. And, but we just want to make sure we do this right. And I also want to consider CLIP also in the mix because we do be able to transfer kids from up here. And if they're transferring or if we're transferring a kid that's an AP Ling class over to hopefully their AP Ling class and that they're going to be able to keep their GPA and whatnot. We do figure, we do feel, even though it's, it's not, it's a gratification. But we do feel that the resignation of being a top honor graduate has been thus far enough incentive for most students to take the AP class. So we are not doing away with the criteria that would be for those top honor kids. There will still be, well, criteria will have to be met in order to receive top honor. And of course, we'll consider this break this gap. Okay? As far as course offerings, summarize dedicated offering a robust and challenging curriculum. I appreciate Dr. Beck and Alicia Beck for their kind words. But we're, we're all one big team over there, so we're trying to offer as many programs and, and offerings as possible. Face and point, we have the right to do teachers to attend the AP summit this summer. Either it's a quarter or a Sunday. The reason is simple. We want to offer classes, more AP type classes, so those kids can take a challenging curriculum and hopefully earn a college. Coming in nineteen twenty, we are having three AP classes to offer. Another AP language, AP literature and AP physics. In twenty twenty one, we're looking to add AP Chem and AP US history. AP US history we ran new, but we have a teacher that is willing to go to the summit and get certified, qualified to do AP US history. And then of course, we're always exploring other avenues. I mean, we are having small school and, you know, I would, I would love that all teachers be somewhat AP qualified and something. So as far as the CTE, through the assistance of Mr. Clough and the community, we've had some really robust and, and enriching dialogue with the community. And Ms. Smith, which you came aboard, she had an idea to do a fire academy. And actually, we've talked to Adam Madonta and Kyle Marshall, who also need a fire academy, and, and getting this class of reality. And in that, paying a lot of other discussion, almost hitting every interest need that our students have. We're talking E and T classes, outdoor recreation, ritualcy and Dr. Dan and Grace that is highly within his minds. Community health worker with Dr. Help me out.
Jenkins.
Thank you. He came and talked with us. And then of course, an on campus C and A class. We are expanding wood shop and I say wood shop because that's just kind of an old term. And they actually have to encompass more certification programs through N C C E R. Mr. Barrett is currently licensed and certified student and Mr. Staley will be prior to the beginning of school year. So we have the college, kind of the college kids that are, you know, college bound. It gave you a dirty word. But those, and then we also have kids that we also know they're not college bound. They can also attend like workforce. So matter of fact, this is side note, we had one of our students, Mr. Brown, actually emailed me about it. We got it in the paper. I appreciate that. Adrian Malone, I'm going to mention his name because it's now public record, but it is out there. But he participated in Skills USA last week. It was two weeks ago, two weeks ago. And while he was up there, he, he, he was state champion in job demo. But while he was, yeah, four years in a row, while he was up there, he got offered two jobs. So, but he's already got a job, so he said, no thanks. But it's pretty amazing that kids now even down to high school, he's already getting offered some stuff. So Mr. Clough and I met with, and I can't figure his name, I got the email on, on my brain. But we did meet with two representatives with youth entrepreneurship course. And it looks like we are go for that because it is strictly donor financing, which translates into no cost to the industry. So the curriculum is already built and student, students, basically what they do is study marketing business strategies in real life situations to market their products, succeed in a world launch numbers. So we are expanding that. One piece I did put on there and I'm going to kind of tie into what this Beck said about the program is, I, I've already contacted Mr. Clough. There's a next step program that we want to use. It's six through twelve, that's one in K. But it's six through twelve and explores careers kids actually virtually can, can do a career on the computer and see if it sounds like. I've always believed that if I was going to be a doctor, I want to go see what a doctor does before I take all the classes. And then I go, oh, I don't like blood, I don't like that, and I'm out of here. You know, a lot of kids that want to do vets and they don't really understand what veterinarian does. And, or in Dr. Beck's case, dentists, because all they do is they think they, you know, clean teeth and this, that, the other. It goes pretty nasty. So we're always in, we're always in the boat that is pushing backwards, kind of designing, you know? Go out and try it, make sure you like it before you start investing your time and costs and whatnot. So we're hoping that this program will offer that opportunity. Okay? As far as grad requirements go, I think currently the state graduation requirements are set at four and a half credits under the need for graduation. I don't, you guys need to go down the list. Okay. So anyway, twenty four and a half credits. And we're not opposed to bumping the number of credits required because I know there's concern and kind of segues into the last bullet point. However, we don't feel that that should be a school decision. It really needs to be a district decision because again, we need to kind of be a conjunctional eclipse in those transfer students. We want to have a kid that, if only has twenty four and a half and we're at twenty seven. They're like, oh, you don't get to graduate because our requirements are, one thing now in, down south, I don't want to mention the name. Our credit requirement is actually twenty eight and we got a lot of kids that transferred in. They're like, holy moly, how can I, you know, kid up to twenty eight and already have twenty three? How can I, you know, kid up to twenty eight, already have twenty three and this, that, and the other, so it it wasn't the but we figured that that, if 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 that's gonna be the case, if that's what the district is looking at, it bumped up the, uh, number of credit requirements, we're on board, we're on board. Um, just so you know, as it as it stands now, current, our students can currently graduate at twenty eight credit. And some even honor the dual credit. I think you guys heard, we have about six, possibly seven of our students that are graduating with their associates, so that's pretty good. And last but not least, um, senior release, uh, trust me, uh, it's as big a headache as it is for you guys. Uh, for us as well, uh, we are restructuring the senior release, we'd like to add permissions such as accessing scores and state assessments. If they haven't, uh, passed a reading portion or or the math portion, we, our suggestion would be either A or video classes or class audits. Go back to that class and just kind of hang out, learn something you didn't pick up. And, uh, also, uh, we also wanna look at GPA. Because if if we're gonna hold two K standards for kids getting, uh, off campus for lunch and and also our activities and athletics, uh, we're gonna hold standards there, why why wouldn't it be the same? However, we gotta be kind of careful in that balance, because we do have a lot of students that utilize early release to, uh, obviously go to jobs. Um, I do have quite a few students that said, there's no way I can stay at school, I've gotta go to work, because I'm pretty much a primary source of my family's income, and we have to respect that, so those who don't use Ks by K. These are just a few of the ideas we have concerning senior release as well as other programs, but I can assure you, Mr. President, members of the board, that we are working diligently for the betterment of Silver High, and always we are doing what is best for all of our students. And the reason I wrote that is because my head has been like a vice and a fishbowl and everything else today, and I figured if I don't write it, I'm gonna be everything and I look like a fool. I'll be like my spiel. Questions?
Yes.
I have a question, only because they're sitting here and it made me remember, we, he was we're talking about dual enrollment.
Yes.
In the past, dual enrollment, say if you took a math, only counted as an elective.
Right.
Has that been fixed?
Well, it hasn't, but one of the things we're looking at is, again, it goes into provisions. Do we give credit for a math class if the kid hasn't passed a, the general average or two portion of the state assessment? We don't even know if the state assessment's known, like, nationally, too, sort of playing it by ear. I know I've talked to Mr. Brown on several occasions, Mr. Clough as well, about offering, you know, dual credit or dual credit core classes as replacements for cores, not only in the upper levels, because one thing that the college doesn't have to, um, you know, I mean, the college is bound by their standards and everything, but we're also bound by our standards, and we have to test this kid on. So, uh, if we can get them through their junior testing and say, you know, like, your 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 son, Mr. Flores, if he would like to take maybe Algebra II or Calculus class at the college, that he's already passed the state assessment and and everything is good to go, why not give him that fourth math at the college and let him count that? And then reverse the role that you haven't passed, and really, why should you go take college math or college math and give that account of the core, when we still need to pass that state assessment?
Okay, so have we kind of, because I know they were wondering the same thing.
Right.
Are we allowed to comment? I have lots of questions.
I just wanted, because she was under the understanding that it was approved, board approved, and then he asked me the different board, and I said, we haven't talked about that, and I just wanted to.
As far as I know, yeah, we haven't really had that discussion outside of just, you know, conversations Mr. Brown and I have, Mr. Clough, and and I I know it's been brought up a couple times in board meetings, but we really have to make a resolution. I think it's kind of a slippery slope if you look at it that way, because you know, I understand the teachers, and we start farming our kid down to college, and they can take college classes, and what's the need for teachers here at the high school and this and the other, but we can set provisions where those numbers won't be so great at the high school, uh, versus, you know, the kids that, um, would be able to take advantage of that, so I think.
Well, and just a little history, that's kind of what happened.
Right.
Is we, you know, we didn't have the really high qualified math teachers and science teachers, and so they said, well, there are better teachers at the university, and so that's when kids started going up there, and so it's.
And I I think we do do the students a disservice, quite frankly, I'm gonna part or pick on, uh, Mr. McMillan's son. Say he passes his Algebra II and he wants to go on and take calculus, well, why should I be, oh, you gotta take three calories, three, whatever. Because taking over college is just gonna like, that's not fair to do to him, especially if he wants to go into that field, you know, same thing works true for our senior English class. Right now, as I understand, for a student to get senior English credit, they have to take one oh one, one oh two, and graduate, sure. But you gotta take nine credit hours of English to count for one, one credit of senior English, and I think that's pardon, that's redundant, it goes. So we really gotta look at all systems, but we also have to make sure that we're not gonna have that issue as as we just discussed, Mr. Martin, that we're not just farming our kid out to where I say, wow, we don't have qualified teachers to go over there.
Right, right.
We have, uh, I think, I honestly, we really have a highly qualified staff. We are working on building more, uh, there's some work that Mr. Brown and Mr. Clough and I and Ms. Smith have been talking about, and getting some other resources there to really ramp up our teachings and everything, and it's kind of like I said in here, um, the main thing is working, teachers working with parents, holding their children accountable for their learning, and and also never going, our expectations are even higher, so.
So I would just say, maybe you guys wanna get on the
We can chit chat.
Get a table and talk about that.
We have to stand up.
Oh, no, no, I just think like a future meeting, where you guys can all, yeah, come to an understanding
Sure.
With how we're gonna deal with that. Quick question, so AP.
AP.
All freshmen through senior?
No, um, well, that's not necessarily true, because I was kind of under the, um, um, misconception that AP, like AP Lang heavy junior and AP Lit heavy senior, it doesn't, AP is open, however, they do, uh, require that you take it later in year. So what we're looking at is our honors courses will be offered to freshmen and sophomore, and then AP's open enrollment, so there's really no sense in having three APs prepared for AP class. Although we can have, the teachers that are teaching, it will be used in pre-AP curriculum. The only, the only issue with that, Dr. Diaz, is if we don't label it pre-AP, then we're not liable to have the, uh, submit, uh, syllabus audit and this, that, and the other, we're not bound by what the pre-AP, because they did change their rules now. So now PAP has to go through a syllabus audit, and there's all kinds of provisions and stuff, so we'd rather avoid that, give the kids an opportunity to take an honors level course, and then decide at that point in time, junior, senior, and take the AP classes.
That's our first book.
Right, yeah. So Lit, Lang, and then Physics, and then, of course, US History is usually a junior level course, so you'll see that across the school, uh, schools in the state, and most of their AP classes are 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 usually reserved for the upper level students. So, does that make sense?
When the AP history comes on, that will actually help, I mean, the language arts.
Right.
So I think they'll start playing with other things.
Right. Well, I'm really honest, honest with the education, they should get AP level, I thought, it's gonna be more difficult to prepare.
I guess I would just echo my concerns we've already discussed about the AP and the lack of it in the lower levels, if you're not gonna provide the AP guidance upfront, what makes us think our kids are gonna be prepared junior and senior year?
Well.
And that's, as I, we've discussed it, I understand that.
Yeah.
Um, but I.
And I respect that, I I really do, but there's other factors that that we're seeing as far as, I mean, a true, a true PAP course really shouldn't be in it, it's expected to move its way up. Somebody's trying to take a ninth, tenth, PAP, and this, that, and the other, they have the skills and stuff. And eventually, we can get, and I noticed, it was mentioned in the, uh, meeting earlier here in the calendar, if we get that vertical alignment really going and stuff, we we can, we can make that happen, so. But I honestly think too, that the 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 teachers that are teaching the honors classes, if you call it honors, uh, English ten or whatever you call it, uh, they will be using the AP curriculum to get those kids ready, because most of those kids that do take the honors classes will go on to take the AP classes, so. I think that's our vision.
I I guess the other part in that, well, it's, it is the worst, so, uh, we talked about, when you have standards that you're helped to, in the AP curriculum, they're set standards.
Right.
Uh, and if someone walks into an honors course, and we're just calling it honors for the sake of calling it, and honors oftentimes it looks like the regular ed course.
I agree.
Um, and and so I I don't think we're exempt from that concern.
Right.
So I I I would just say we can agree to disagree on the current structure, and I I I will hope that we will raise that bar.
We are gonna raise that bar, I think we're, you know.
Any questions?
Couple of, couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
On, uh, five point O scale.
Yes, sir.
And I know that's problematic, especially looking at at different universities accepted, others don't.
Right.
But you mentioned something I think new, which is, I think, maybe, um, maybe the answer is the credit bump.
Right.
That's something that would be determined by the school and and that the the term would be, but the, the, uh, academic load in the course.
Yes, sir.
Would that be like, um, like a, I think you mentioned the point two five to the GPA or something like that?
Schools that utilize that, some have gone like a four point six seven, I don't remember coming up with that number. But some of it, you know, gone as four point five, and others just, you know, five oh, five oh just seems to be like easier what to deal with, because five for A, four for B, so forth, so on down the line. Um, the schools that use like the point two five, the point six seven, or whatever, um, I just thought that was kind of odd. And it's probably something I'd need to contact the schools and find out the reasoning and how they calculate down the, down the line, because I'm assuming the four point two five would be an A, and then what would be considered a B, so, so on, but really, truly, that's all, that's all that's stated. Can't remember which hand I reviewed, but it was stated that it would be a point two five, and I just use the term GPA.
I think that's kind of maybe an interesting concept, and maybe you keep the four point O and once you, once you reach your four point O, you're, that's, you're you're capped out, but you've got opportunities if you wanna take a more challenging course. You could get a bump on that course, and I think you mentioned NHD, I think that's an excellent example of, of course, that's
Probably would.
A lot more rigor to it.
Right.
And would deserve a a bump, just like some of the other AP courses do.
Right.
Um, would require a bump, so I I think that's something that, at least initially, I'm thinking would be kind of interesting, you still keep the four point O scale.
Did you get that little extra incentive, if you will, to, uh, take that extra challenging course?
Right.
I appreciate you thinking outside the box for that, because that's really, I'm trying to incentivize our kids pushing themselves. You know, we don't always have to be the external factor.
Right.
For those kids that really, we're trying to challenge the top ten percent, just like we try to accommodate the bottom ten percent, that's mine. Uh, because we need to look at all those kids, and so I appreciate you trying to think outside the box.
We're trying to, we're offering things that, yeah.
The other thing was, um, the senior release, um, and it's just something I had come to mind, listening to the the Beck's presentation earlier.
Sure.
Is is maybe that's, uh, an opportunity, we're talking about having tutors, maybe having, uh, that option as a student tutor.
Right.
Going down to the junior high, going down to the elementary, to tutor younger kids for those, those seniors that have met their graduation requirements, that have an interest in in helping, um, just kind of being an idea that just kind of bumped and try and try to tie in some.
Sure. And we, we actually thought of that idea, we had a student come to us, this is probably in January, and he wanted to do, I mean, he's he's already taken all the math at college and everything, but he wants to actually teach a class out of the university, so I mean, and and so we know the interest is there. That's why that goes, so I can just tell you the million dollar question on these, are, is there, uh, is there funding for it? So, most of the kids just just be the little guys that get down and work, but there are some kids that be, they will.
And so maybe there's an opportunity there, as as opposed to just turning it loose, all right, you don't have anything, you can
Right.
Do whatever, and and really, my concern with the senior release almost is, whether anything is kind of a safety and security issue, because, okay, kids, they don't have a a class, so they can either go to the commons, or they can go to the library, or they can leave campus. But we're really not keeping them accountable.
We're gonna tie them down.
Tracking them, okay, if you're gonna go to the library, you've gotta sign in, so we know that you're at the library. If you're gonna leave campus, you've gotta sign out and sign back in.
Right.
And more of kind of an accountability piece of, you know, should something happen?
Right.
Where is, where are these senior release kids, are they still on campus, did they leave campus, are they at work?
We honestly thought about that idea, to have a separate sign-on sheet for the senior release kids, um, and then a sign-in sheet on the library as well, and and if they're gonna stay on campus, have a sheet saying, you know, I'm gonna stay in Mr. Holland's class, there's this hour, so I can catch up on something, whatever. So that way, we can keep track, because I'm with you, I mean, it's, it's a virtual nightmare to find out thoroughly, it's good, though. Because especially, you know, since we have probably, you know, at least one, you know, accountability.
Right, right, now they're just kind of coming and going and with no accountability, and so I think there's, from a safety and security issue, I think that's it's, it's a gap that we have at this point.
I think definitely, if I'm looking at the safety and security, um, entry and exit of student section, that's very high level priority, that's very.
And then, one last thing that I've forgotten to bring up, uh, a couple of times that that you've all been here is, um, just to kind of put a bug in your ear, I've been asked by, uh, uh, one of the teachers about potentially having some incentives, if you, uh, for closed campus, uh, from time to time, if there's, um, behaviors of, kind of as a whole, closing the campus for lunch, hey, our campus isn't looking very clean, we have a lot of behavior issues, we're gonna close lunch for for the week, and and this is something, right, it's kind of off topic, but.
Well, it actually is on topic, because it's something that Ms. Smith and I discussed, because just in a day, we're walking through the halls, you know, it's after lunch, and we just, a lot of kids got in late, so they got their Sonic and this, that, and the other. And I even made a comment, I said, you know what, maybe we just need to close the campus down for a week and kind of redirect all the students to do and their responsibilities, if they're gonna, you know, be responsible, get off school to do the work, and then be responsible back on time, so. And the second piece you brought up, I mean, right now, we're hopefully starting to phase in a new phase of it, but on the school, I think it's gonna be a lot of pride in the community, a lot of pride in the school. One of the things that my expectation, not that it is it now, because it is, but the F P, I think, maintenance of that, I love it, so. Because we're not dealing with, uh, very, really at all, and kids are doing everything they can to help with the, uh, you know, deconstruction, I mean, and helping with construction, so.
I'm just reinforcing the fact that it's a privilege, I think that's a great idea.
Right, and I, and I think that gets lost in translation at times, especially if parents are like, what do you mean, my kid, that's the only way he eats, I'm not gonna eat that stuff in the cafeteria, and, oh, I'll be, I'll be get, they just rules and you just have to suck it up.
Yes.
There's nothing like peer pressure.
Right, well, you're absolutely correct on that.
Better for worse.
Right, I I think it's in the presentation, it's not necessarily a punishment.
Right.
It's a privilege to have an open, open campus, and if you lose that privilege, you don't have an open campus.
Right. I'm sorry, sir. I think we are doing, re-revanching our, our RISPOM matrix and our, and our overall spin and outlook, so that could be actually one of the things we have in, so I appreciate that, to Jezzo.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for coming sick. And thanks for being receptive to ideas.
Probably.
I just like you, I'm surprised you ended up before. Thank you.
President, please, number three four, Luis Costa, from Rebby Law Firm, in, uh, serving as your bond counsel, so I'm here before you, that must mean it's time to borrow some more money. So we got the call a few weeks ago that this district is ready to proceed. Uh, so you have before you the sort of kickoff resolution. Basically, just authorizing, uh, making the determination that it's necessary in the best interest of the district and the inhabitants of the district to proceed with the issuance of an additional five million dollars in general obligation loans. Remember, the last couple of years, we've done five, five million dollar inquiries, so this is the third or fourth installment. Um, uh, simply just ratifying prior actions of the board and your officers of the district and agents, uh, towards the issuance of the bonds. You authorize the president of the board and the district superintendent to preliminary determine the date, time, and place for the sale of the bonds, including the series, the date of date, the principal amount maturing in each year, maturity and interest rates, redemption provisions, and also authorizing them to have published a notice of sale, um, uh, for the bonds after determination of the details of the authorized bonds in the Silver City David Press and Independent, just letting everyone know that the bonds are available, uh, and we intend to sell them. Uh, the bonds will be sold, uh, uh, subsequent to a resolution, a parameters resolution that I'll have for you next month. That's sort of the meat, nuts, and bolts of the, of the whole transaction, this is pretty, uh, of a skeleton, uh, resolution. And I think, as long as it's, uh, okay with the board, we'll sort of follow the same model that we did last year. The the bond resolution authorizes, uh, the issuance of the bonds within certain parameters, and then you're delegating, uh, responsibility to a delegateee to, on the sale date, make the final determinations as to interest, and then come back and report to you what happened on the sale and pricing date. Um, it seems to have been working out very well, uh, most, most public bodies have moved to that model since it's been allowed, and I think we we did a pretty good job of it last year. I might propose just a couple of tweaks here and there, that I'll point out to you when I have the the bond resolution particularly in delegating, uh, designating one or more than one person to serve it as that, but I've had some issues come up with in the last year, does that make a public, a policymaking body? I've had some issues come up with in the last year. Does that make a public, a policymaking body for purposes of the Open Meetings Act? So if you just designate one person, you can sort of sidestep those issues. So that's one of the things I might, uh, suggest moving to. And, and for just simply, uh, allowing the president of the board and the superintendent to authorize and make arrangements for negotiated sale. After speaking with Lale, uh, your financial advisor a week or so ago, she was, uh, telling me that the market was like, it would be more conducive to a negotiated sale again this year rather than, you know, going out into a whole, uh, public sale. Uh, but there's still, and I don't know if you have resolved this yet or not, but, but looking at either a negotiated sale with a finance authority. Uh, cause I know she was looking at some pretty favorable, uh, interest rate, uh, interest rates on the early end of the maturity schedule there. Or maybe something like we did last year where they go and put out R F Qs to see who is, um, the most advantageous bidder and working with them. Uh, and that's what we did last year. And finally, just, uh, memorializing that you've engaged Hilltop Securities to serve as your financial advisor in this transaction. Uh, and my law firm has your bond counsel in this transaction. Normally at this stage, we present, uh, language in this resolution that, uh, satisfies the internal revenue codes requirements for reimbursement of, of bond proceeds. But after talking to your staff, we understand that there is no need for reimbursement at this time, uh, or at least in association with this issue. So we stripped, we stripped that out of this resolution. So that's fine. There's no problem with that. We just, we just know that you won't be able to reimburse yourselves for capital expenditures out of bond proceeds for, for this particular issue. And so with that, I think that sums it up. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, you may have.
I guess just to clarify, um, that means we have the funds available to cover the issuing costs. So we don't need to reimburse. Right. Okay.
And then, uh, as I said, I'll be back for you next month with the, uh, uh, bond resolution. I'm expecting a sale date in early to mid-June. Uh, and then I will be back to you at the June meeting to, for the presentation, that final terms to get, to sign the bond document and then a closing on at the very, very end of June, twenty seventh to twenty eighth.
So tonight is just to beat the ball rolling on that process, correct?
Exactly.
Kind of resolution.
Little action items that we have to act on, correct?
Correct.
Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda, um, S C E A.
I'm the secretary for S C E A. Um, Katrina and I send our apologies for not being here. Uh, they look forward to the next meeting. And Katrina, I want to give one that being they're going through right now.
Thank you. Want to, uh, be an invitation to the board. Mr., uh,
Mr. President, members of the board, committee members. The first item is on page twenty-three of your board book. And we are asking for approval for the Silver Consolidated Schools Resolution, number eighteen dash six A. The resolution supporting membership in the Southwest Regional Education Cooperative, number ten, based in the Demy. We've already discussed the advantages of joining that R A C. So that's, that's what it's going to be. Asking you all to approve.
How do we not know the cost of it? Is that something, is that the one we were talking about where we really don't know how much it's gonna cost?
Yeah. So it's gonna be about nineteen thousand.
Is it an adjusted rate based on how often we utilize the service? Is that why it's so?
I'll give you the history, but do you remember back in September, we approved this?
No, I do.
Okay. Had to be approved by New Mexico Pet. Senator Ruskowski had to approve it. We've had a change in administration. It did not get done before the Ruskowski. Administration was done, so we had to resubmit the approval and have them do it. This is a foregone conclusion. It will be bill prorated for the services of the date of resolution.
How much we don't annually like on every?
It's, the formula is very complicated, but it's based on your totals. You get deductions for total sped enrollment, at-risk populations and everything else. And they're still waiting to see what those factors are with the new budget that are coming through. But the range that was budgeted was between seventeen and nineteen thousand dollars. They don't anticipate it going over that in a year. And to give that as a comparison, we paid nineteen thousand dollars for a professional development contract with Solution Tree. And so in kind, if we use them more, we can trade off that contract. So it's gonna save us more than just in the R A C services. But in other ways that where we've had to spend money before, we now go to them as a resource and be able to use them.
Thank you.
I hope to be as quick as Mr. Brown for lunch. So let's see what happens.
What's that? Good item B?
Okay. I thought you were done. A and B.
That's okay.
Mr. Brown, item B.
Item B. Resolution to establish the reasonable notice to the public while public meetings. And so again, this is just basically notifying the community and, and those that are present regarding the dates that we're going to be holding our meetings. And so it is going to be, as it's on page twenty-four, out of number one, the regular meetings shall be held each month in the third Monday of the month. Eleven meetings per year will be held in the boardroom of the administration building here. And one meeting will be held per year in a clip. And they all begin at six o'clock, the regular meetings. And I'm not going to take any more time. Everybody can read it. But that's basically what this is, is approval, notifying the community for not holding meetings for ten days.
That's just something you have to do annually, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct. I've got a couple more items if I may that I was asking.
Yes, sir. Please do very quickly.
There was some question as to why silver schools chose not to participate in the K five plus program. And originally whenever we looked into the, joining the program, which we did last year, was K three plus. Well, the state since changed it to K five plus. And so we were still gonna move forward with it. And then the state came up with other, um, best word, I guess, stipulations that, that have been required. And so I'm going to read them. Uh, school would begin on July first, if indeed we did participate. Uh, the approved K five plus program shall, number one, provide no fewer than twenty-five additional instructional days prior to the start of the regular school year, which really isn't that big a problem. It, it did interfere with our professional development that we tried to offer at the beginning of the school year. So that, that, that was a major issue with that, but still we, we were able to make that work. Number two, keep students that participate in the K five plus program with the same teacher and cohort of students during the regular school year. That's where the biggest issue arose. Tried to find teachers that were willing to come and teach the same students and it was gonna be the same group of students for the entire year. That's where we were struggling. We could not guarantee that K five. Now, we could in, for examples, first, second, and third grade, but then the other grades we wouldn't be able to because of teaching, we couldn't find teachers that were willing to do that. Uh, three, include additional professional development for K five plus teachers and how young children learn to read. That would have been an issue. Number four, be implemented schoolwide. That is something that we felt we would be rushing. That we did, if we just jumped in with book fee without actually having an opportunity to talk to the school ahead of time and make sure that the school and the community were on board with this. Number five, be mandatory for all students in participating elementary school no later than the twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. So it, it's a mandatory requirement that if we would have joined it this year, that it would be full, it'd be schoolwide by the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And again, we felt that that was kind of rushed. And, and so we wanted to, uh, let the keyings be worked out, so to speak, first. And I can tell you at the superintendent association meeting that I attended the spring budget workshop out of eighty-nine districts, only five said they were gonna participate in the program.
So is there gold to make it year-round school, basically?
It's, that's the thought.
I don't wanna make it year-round.
And that's the kind of the thought.
I mean, this is leaning heavily that way, Doctor. Yeah. Let's, let's work that.
Just ask us. We'll be underhanded.
And the one thing it does, P E D stress that they will be monitoring the provisions of the K five plus act to ensure that, that, uh, they're only here too. And so we didn't want to say we could do something and then find out later that we weren't. They have the funds and so we really wanted to make sure we have our induction before we even commit to something like that.
I'm ashamed. I just know the kids that benefited from it, um, last year. But I, I mean, with all of the red tape and those stipulations, it almost made it impossible to participate.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right.
Like a question online or a couple of questions, um, and from what I understand, the funding really wasn't significant either. So it would make it difficult from a funding perspective as well. Is that, is that kind of what you understood as well?
I've heard that. And that was another concern that we had. Are we gonna be different to our operational funds to carry on the K five plus program? Of course, you ask the state, and no, it's gonna be fully funded. But then you talk to other folks in the business and they say, be prepared to differ to your funds. And so again, until some of these keys have worked out, we didn't want to commit to something that, that we weren't comfortable with.
And at this time, and it's something that you said we can wait a year or two and if we decide, hey, in two years, yeah, it looks like something we wanna go to, then we can always entertain that option again.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And we'll have more time to get more input and feedback from. So is that, would that be directly impacted by it?
Thank you for taking the time to go to that. I've got a lot of questions.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Absolutely. And feel free to direct anybody to me if you would like to. No problem. And if I may, we are in the process of preparing for S B nine election. And that is gonna be very, very important to our district, needless to say, in the sense that the, the G O bonds, of course, to, just to simplify everything, the G O bonds are mainly for new construction. And the S B nine would be for maintenance of the current facilities. And so it's critical that if we do not receive the funding from the S B nine, then we will have to give it to operational, which is going to have a direct impact on student programs. And so it's critical that we do actually, uh, get this passed. And so the, the ballot is scheduled to be mailed out tomorrow. Uh, we have flyers that are, uh, have been printed up. And I'm proud to say that the design was by one of our students at Silver High School for the flyer. And those little bit of input tweaking from a few other folks along the way, but the majority of it was, was created by a student from Silver High School. And so the flyers will be going out to every school and tomorrow, and they will be distributed ASAP. So therefore we're asking the students, of course, should give them to parents, we're asking parents to be able to look out for them. Every school will be having advertising on their marquee, the school marquee about this S B nine election. Uh, Mr. Potts will be, uh, sending out a robo-call to the school community. S E A has committed to helping the district in this effort as well by putting the information on their website and actually getting some flyers going throughout the community and, and even now distributing it. Uh, the Silver High School, I'm sorry, the, uh, Silver Consolidated Schools website and social media has a lot of information that Mr. McMillan had provided for us from, uh, a template, so to speak, from Alma Board of Public Schools. Ms. Hernandez did a fabulous job in, in tweaking into where it fits Silver Consolidated Schools. And that is on our list as well. And it is on our social media pages and Mr. Potts correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Facebook and Twitter.
Facebook right now.
Facebook right now. Okay. Mr. Potts is also going to be distributing a, an email to all staff members. Uh, we are going to have an at place in the Silver City Daily Press. I know that Mr. McMillan and Mr. Khan were interviewed on the radio with the Chamber of Commerce. And Mr. Clough, myself and Mr. Khan will be going this Thursday morning with, uh, Mr. Ro Doudieta to, on the radio again as well. There is also an ad that has been placed in the Grand County Beach. Uh, Ms. Hernandez posted one of the flyers at the post office as well as the library. And, uh, I think that that is every place, every anywhere, the school marquees. Uh, I did reach out to, um, Mr. Sherwood at Alamo Lea Books, as they're going to be benefiting from this as well and asking if they would be willing to pay for the marquee. And I haven't yet heard a response. So I'll reach out to him again to see if they would be willing to do so.
Any questions, comments?
We also pass it out that the chamber presentation that I gave last week, um, to the Chamber of Commerce as well as our last meeting dialogues, we have about a hundred copies.
I think it's important to, to remind people that it's not like there's a voting day out there where you can go put your vote in and you don't mail in the ballot. You have to submit your ballot via mail. Otherwise it won't count. And so I think it's important, cause a lot of us, you've been like, okay, I'll just go the day of voting. You're just busy running around. You don't want to take the time to go drop it off in the box or it's more paperwork, right? Like everybody has more paperwork. So I think it's important when we talk to people, that one, we get it out there, but two, that people realize it is a mail-in type vote. And so we have to, have to educate people that that's the only way to vote. That's the only way to get it approved so that we have funding for it.
And I know, uh, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I think, uh, I think our continuing education, information, distribution efforts, um, during staff meetings with our own folks, the, the social media, I think it's gonna be important that we kind of keep it, you know, forefront as, as being important. And, and thank you for, for distributing the message.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Clough?
Thank you, President Floyd, members of board, administration and community members as well as S C E A. Um, I'm gonna ask for a sound on two topics. I'm gonna do the simple math question first. I'm gonna do the transportation contract. So I can give you more time to look at the enrollment numbers. Uh, when the initial contract was submitted two months ago, there was a clerical error in calculating the lease rate. So we're asking for it to be reapproved with a four hundred and twenty-three dollar increase. Um, there's a difference between an old bus and a new bus being calculated into the formula. Um, so it's just a four hundred and twenty-three dollar increase that needs to be made contract. So, um, hopefully that clarifies any questions you would have on why we're resubmitting the transportation contract.
Are we just approving the increase?
Yeah. Well, you're approving the whole contract again. So that way we're safe. It has the new dollar figures in there already. So you are just technically approving a four hundred and twenty-three dollar increase. And I got Michelle's not, so I must have said it right because we talked about it like that. So, um, the other thing is I was asked to gather the last five years of our student enrollment. Um, as you can see, I have given you the district-wide numbers by grade level for the last five years and those by building. There are a couple of trends that I'd like to point out that we can look at. First, we went to the budget meetings, um, in Albuquerque. Um, we did notice that we are about nearing the state with regards to student decreases because we're in one of those downward cycles of student population in the state that happens about every seven, ten years. So this is not inconsistent with other districts in the state. So we've kind of stabilized, you can see, based on last year's enrollment. We usually were down about a hundred per year. We're only down about forty-five, but also as you see how, uh, pre-K is calculated, it has been in our formula. But now it's actually part of student enrollment paid through sped and the grants. So there's waiting to find out what's happening with the pre-K programs and how they're being funded and what's gonna be the new state standard for funding pre-K. That might become a normal part of our funding formula in the future, but we didn't get a lot of answers in, in Albuquerque on that. They were not giving discretion. They're waiting to develop a new early childhood department with C Y F D and P E D being there. The only thing we did learn is all preschool money will be coming from the designated funds of C Y F D and P E D. So if you're a P E D program, you're gonna get most of your funding from P E D. If you're a C Y F D program, you get it from there. So we're still waiting to see that. Um, also, you'll also notice that, um, in our student enrollment numbers, if you look at that, um, with the numbers, our elementary is a pretty much stabilized within about twenty of each other. Um, well, block just stayed the same. High school's dropped a little bit. But this is normal for across the state because of the cycle we're in. And they're anticipating within the next seven to ten years, an increase in student enrollment. But we'll have to wait and see because all these projections based on data. So if there's any questions you would like for me to answer, I'd be happy to answer at this time.
I would just say thank you for the information. It's encouraging.
And Rebecca Lopez does an excellent job of this. She's the one who creates these spreadsheets for us. She's playing the results. So we stay on top of this and look at it. Plus, this even helps with our accurate roster counts. So when we go to look at our teachers' evaluations and like that, we have a pretty good idea what's going on. And we can also do this for 40, 80 and 120. I gave you guys access to 120-day reports. So if you'd like to have access to those 40 and 80-day reports on Find Your Science to see that in the future, we can do that for the board as well. So if you guys have that discussion in a teacher work session, let us know. We'll be happy to provide any to you.
Thank you.
Well, I was checking my email while I was sitting here earlier and I did finally get my 910 B5. I got it today because they were still working with, trying to figure out what our app risk index was. We had a deadline of Friday to get it turned in. And I had Mr. Clough sign on it. I had verified the information.
Twice in the same day.
I sent it out and they said, oh yeah, we're changing things because they forgot to include the charter schools in their calculations. So they had to send us back the information for us to validate it again. And so that, I guess, was part of the catching point for them not being able to get the 910 B5. As I said, I just got it, so I haven't been able to check it. So this is holding me up now.
Which is why I made that special board meeting we raised earlier.
That will allow me to calculate where our budget number is going to be and, and we'll get it to see what other changes have come into that. We did before, I had a budget meeting just last week and we did get a few clarifications that we weren't able to get at the spring budget workshop in that the state has, they set the minimums for teachers. And the new minimums are 41,000 for level one, 50,000 for level two and 60,000 for level three. That's going to mean, and, and then they also added in that is a 6% increase that has to go onto the salary schedule before we impute those minimums. Kathy Lemke, who is our payroll specialist, and she and I were working on it and and those numbers, I mean, because of the way they're having us do this, it's going to push those numbers out beyond the 6% for teachers because they have mandated, you know, we have to implement the 6% first and then push up the minimums. And right now, like, we are currently at last year's minimums for level one teacher. We were at 36,000. It's going up to 41,000 and we have 25 teachers on that level. Last year, we were above the minimum. We were at 45,320 for our level two teachers. That is now at 50,000. And we have 87.4 teachers on that salary schedule. And then the level three teachers are going from a 54,000 minimum to a 60,000 minimum salary. And that, we have 63 teachers on that salary schedule. So that's going to be a big impact. And also they set minimums for the school principals, but we are well within range of those, so we don't have to. But the thing is that they did set a 6% increase for all other salary schedules. So we have to look at all of that and fund that before we can start moving forward with anything else because we have to meet those requirements and prove that we've met those requirements. We have to sign a certification for each of those salary schedules to say that, yes, we have met and at least meet, if not exceed, those minimum requirements. So that's something that's coming into play that, you know, we'll have to work with. And then I was glad that Mr. Brown talked about the K five plus program. The other thing that has been a big topic of conversation is the extended learning time program, which everybody was kind of mixing everything together here and out there, hearing that the teachers were going to get 10 more days on their contracts and that they weren't going to be funded for it. Well, they are going to fund those 10, you know, additional days, but right now it's something that we can opt in around. And there's also a lot of requirements tied to those 10 additional days. And so this year we have opted out of that, you know, which I can't imagine how the state's going to, is planning on trying to cover this because it's on a, you, you have to, oh gosh, words are leaving me here. It, it, it's, you have an option. It's optional right now. You can opt in or opt out of that. But I'm looking at, you know, Silver City opts in to 10 additional days for all of their teachers, which means they have to fund us for 10 additional paydays for all of, paid days in the contract for all of our teachers. That's one thing. But if APS opts into that, I mean, that's got to carry a huge price tag. How can they, you know, only have funded us for some of this, some of these other things account for being able to, to fund that as well? So I think there's going to be a lot of, you know.
Red.
Yeah. Because ideally, you know, it sounds great, you know, we're going to have 10 days. And my understanding is those, most of those days are going to be professional development days. Those aren't classroom days. Those are training days for the teachers and stuff. So, I mean, it's something, it's a program that right now it's optional. And, you know, we're not jumping right in because they gave us, I think tomorrow you have to have decided and let PED know by tomorrow whether you're going to do this. How are you going to talk to your staff and, and, and get them, you know, to understand what's going on and, and to, you know, there just wasn't enough time. And so I'm glad that we are sitting back and allowing this to go, you know, so that we can, they can work out some of the teams and they can find out whether there's actually funding for that. Because, I mean, like I said, if APS took it on to do for every one of their teachers, I don't think the state could fund it. But it is what it is. So anyway, that's where I stand right now with our budget in process. Any questions? Oh, and the other thing is, we also had to hit the $9 minimum wage because that is implemented as of January 2020. We, of course, would do that starting our fiscal year so that we don't have a switch during the year. And so we have a few positions that they're not, they're hourly positions. We have our game workers. We have our cafeteria subs. And we also had to look at our dystopian salary schedules to make sure that everybody is meeting that $9 minimum wage that will be implemented in the upcoming calendar year. So lots of moving parts.
I wonder your children. Michelle, and I know I briefly spoke with you about this, but with the 6% pay increase, was this going to be dependent seldomly on the formula you're beginning from the?
Well, it's not dependent on it. They, they're mandating it in statute that you have to do it.
But is that?
Hopefully they've funded it.
But is that going to be from state funding or our own funding that we're going to have to come up with that?
She's hoping it. You hope it's funded, but like I said, you know, everybody has a different salary schedule, you know, and they're saying we have to meet those minimums. And, you know, Kathy and I, like I said, we were working with it earlier and, you know, just pushing everything, you know, pushing everybody up to the minimum and trying to add it straight, you know, 6% straight across the board without, you know, manipulating our salary schedules a little bit. One of our salary schedules was, was going to cost an $800,000 increase, just one teacher's salary schedule. I know they're not funding us for millions and millions and, you know, so we have to work with it, make sure that we're in compliance, but also be very cognizant of how much money we have to spend.
Okay, I'm getting that confused with this, this small school.
Small school funding, that is still, I haven't had a chance to look closely because like I said, it was up to the 910 B5. But there is some wording on there. I can't tell if they are giving us, you know, the same weighted value for the, the school, small school funding or if they moved it all together until I get a chance to look at it. I can't tell you, but I know that I did a kind of preview to, you know, based on our old forms last year. And I shared with Mr. Brown that all things being equal, if they took out small schools funding without any kind of a remedy for it, it was going to impact our budget with an $895,000 reduction right off the bat.
Question for you. So now, I mean, we knew the 6% applied, it was going to apply to teachers, but now you understand is, the state is saying all with our statutory staff, hourly, everybody's going to get a 6%.
The only one that was exempt and it was up to board decision was the superintendent. Every other employee is covered.
Which is not the case.
Thank you.
So when are our budget meetings coming out?
Um, got the number today. It's on the table today, so hopefully next week I'll have another one because my budget is due May 13th. Which is not real, really realistic based on the times that they've given us now with the information. So, I mean, it's just going to be a matter of seeing what we can get done and then we may have to shift it a little bit. I mean, you know, the final, final, final day is June the 20th, but they can't have this all reporting on June the 20th, so, you know.
Will you just make those dates, that we always do, but make those pick available to us?
Yes, I'm trying to be more nuanced. I can figure that out. I'll make it.
Michelle, can you share what, what schools would be impacted by the small school funding?
The small school funding, we received small school funding for Sixth Street Elementary School and Cliff's Grace. Those are the ones that they factor in for us.
Thank you. Board of Education, Finance Subcommittee,委員会.
Yes, we met with Martha and Michelle last Monday. And we were all really interested in the budget and, you know, we didn't really, we didn't have anything yet. You'll notice on our variance report that all of her bars were able to get budgeted in. So we're sitting at a 3.53% total budget projected for our catch carryover. The board report was on a different date, so it doesn't reflect that yet. But we really were talking about basically all the things that she just gave you an update on and we're anxious to hear how, how the funding actually comes out.
Any questions, Michelle? This time. Next is, today's assessment, we're scheduled, we were scheduled to think tomorrow, I was going to give the committee a report on tonight's board meeting, but we are doing it Thursday because of conflict that I have tomorrow. We're going to talk about some monies that legislature would regards to, to capital outlay. And what, what my concern is, and maybe, maybe it's not even a concern. I brought this up with, with Michelle and Ashley at our general meeting is that we, as a board, approved the three security guards earlier in the year to be done this fiscal year. And I realized that schools almost don't want to be able to six, seven, eight, nine. However, you know, the committee was told, the public was told, everybody here has been told that we were waiting for the legislature to see where the money was going to come from, if possibly they were going to help fund some of the salaries. That they're not going to help fund some of the salaries. So we already proved that a lot as a board that regardless of this fund, they're not from the legislature, we're still going to move forward, the hiring of three security guards. So we, we, we need to move forward. We hired one security guard at Cliff. And that's when we realized that Cliff wasn't getting the law enforcement officer there because of manpower issues. We moved forward and hired one out of the three, and that one is at Cliff as a security guard. And we still have to hire two more. And we're going to hire two more. Is that correct, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
I understand that they're not going to probably be on board. Well, they may be on board for a week or two or whatever the process is, but they're getting through the process. But at least the administrators, the public, parents, students, they know that we're on board to keep the school secure. Those two security guards will be on board. That way they'll, well, ready to go by the fall.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. But they will be on board this, this fiscal year on the books.
That, that's, the plan is to get, to advertise?
Yes.
And to get them hired for next school year.
Right.
Yes, right.
That's what, we're going to discuss, I'm going to discuss Thursday with their assessment committee, with the administrators and the committee. That's all I have with their assessment committee this time.
Oh, quick question. So I, I, I think it's kind of a learning for us how to activate the, what do you call the crisis work?
Threat assessment.
The crisis intervention team.
Yes.
So was that, that team activated when we had the situation that Ashley was talking about?
That's a good question. Um, yes. And that's a different, that's a different committee than their assessment. And that committee is led by, by Ms. Hopwood. But at the same time, um, let me ask, Ben, how, where's our reporting at? Where we at with that?
For what? For the app?
Yes.
We met and the, one of the things that needs to be done is, uh, law enforcement needs to be involved in the first meeting. They won't set us up for the act unless law enforcement is there. And law enforcement wasn't at the first meeting.
I, I can arrange that.
It's already arranged.
Is it? Okay.
Rusty Vace is the one who's coordinating that. Mike Burns will be representing Sheriff's Department and Chief Portillo will sign an officer from Silver City Police. Rusty right now is in process of gathering dates from Sandy Hook to see when they're available to give that presentation to law enforcement. And then once that is done, the plan is to hopefully have our 26 crisis intervention team meeting as well.
So to address your question, Dr. Lee, I didn't know if it was activated, but apparently it was activated. Okay.
Mr. Flores, a question, or I guess a comment regarding the threat assessment. I know we, we did approve as a board the, the security guards at the beginning of the year and then we had to take a step back and say, well, the legislature is going to do something. From a financial standpoint, I don't believe the legislature took any funding or made any funding available for this school specific to the security officers. I think they did change some legislation regarding oversight, supervision. And I think it would be vital for us as a board, want to look at our policies and procedures first to ensure that they are aligned for hiring an employee to be armed?
They don't have to be armed right now. We're, we're not even at that because in looking at the model that Rio Rancho put out, I think we are still way behind the curve to get them armed. We're just trying to get the guards in the school as a, as a deterrent. But there, no one is armed at this point in time. I think that's a whole different discussion that we, as a committee and as a board need to address. Because even the salaries are, are beyond with Rio Rancho. It was my understanding, I haven't verified it, but a recently retired lieutenant in the state police took a job at Rio Rancho Security. And I think they call it Rio Rancho Police Force. They have their own name for their police, their security force. Maybe it's Rio Rancho Security Force. I'm not really exactly what it's called. It's my understanding, um, through the state police, great find that he retired because they're paying him upwards of 61,000 to start as armed security guard based on his qualifications and the blocking table. And then I also heard that the minimum that Rio Rancho was going to pay was roughly the number of 38,000 to 40,000 for armed security guards. You know, Rio Rancho has, has done a good job as far as establishing the model, as far as background, psychological, all those for the applicants. And then they also supply the, everything that the officer needs to be armed, including uniforms and, and what have you.
What about weapons? Weapons?
Provide their weapons. Rio Rancho pays for the weapon and ammo, basket, I mean, leather gear, everything. So yeah, we, we, we maybe need to re, relook at the armed portion of it. Because we were sort of born into it, I don't want to say blindly, but maybe not look at every, everything there.
Well, thank you for clarifying that because that was, I had kind of looked at the Rio Rancho model as well and, and seeing all the policies and procedures they had to put on place before they even hired anybody. And I think it would be wise for us to do the same.
Yeah, I downloaded it. I saw it. Read the same thing.
And so, you know, I just didn't want to, one, on the policy procedure side for armed guards, kind of do the hiring first and then, and then think about. do the hiring first and then, and then think about what policies we're kinda training. Or make sure that we had all our, everything in, kind of, ducks lined up there. But then on the financial side, I think we also just need to be aware, we've got a financial budget that we've got living within. And, you know, legislature didn't give us additional money, and if we need to reconsider, um, the number of guards that, you know, we approved previously, then that's something, another conversation that we should probably have. Now that, now that the budget is a little bit more, um, I guess framed out.
Yeah, I think because, you know, we approved the, the three, and we've looked at getting some more next fiscal year. And that's a discussion we're gonna look at for the next ones we have not approved yet. But, you know, sadly, um, like I have said before, um, we as a society are very forgetful. And because there hasn't been a high profile violent school shooting, we still have to put that security in the back burner until something happens. Then if something, another tragedy happens, then everybody comes to the front and say, front burner says, where are their security guards you guys promised us? Why don't we have a security here, why don't we have a security there? Um, and we see that at every, every incident. But we are very forgetful, and we're just trying to be proactive. And, um.
So how many do we already have?
We have three guards at the high school.
Three at the high school, and then one at the, so we already have four guards in our budget.
And I know I've talked to Mr. Brown about, about, and Mr. Coker talked about it. And Miss Smith about new procedures for the current security guards they have at the high school. Um, a, a different way of doing things than, than maybe the way they're doing it now. That's something they're looking at as well. Just trying to be more effective with the, with the resources that they have.
One, I would just add, I think Michelle would concur that there probably are places in our salary schedule that we don't always fill those positions.
Well, as salary schedule is a list of positions possible and the pay that would go with that job. Not every position is filled, and some of them have multiple positions. I mean, we have four business office personnel, but they all have a different function.
Right.
So.
And so I would just say, I definitely, just because we approved them doesn't mean they're repelled to them. And we have four, so there's three at the high school that could potentially be, like you say, done differently with if we don't have the funds. Because I, I don't wanna hire two more people that we don't hire, and then we're having to let teachers go because we can't afford to pay them. So, um, I think we just need to make sure that, you know, yes, security is important, but also making sure that our teachers can depend on this for their job. And that we fully fund our education in the form of two. We have to keep it up, I mean, it has, there has to be that one.
Any questions or comments? Next on the agenda, Board President, um, on here is the NMSBA Scholarship Program. I've had a chance to review all the applicants, and they all, they live very promising, very good resumes. A lot of those applicants are involved, a lot of extracurricular activities. And we have to pick one to send forward, is that correct, Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
This is gonna be a tough choice, I don't know if you guys have a chance to review them?
I would, I would choose, one of, all of them have the transcript except for, not that, that, except for Dave.
Yeah, I don't think we have, I mean, yeah. So, is that part of the recording? No, I guess so. Just send it over for, okay. Thank you.
And, um, that's why I got, just wanted to make a note.
I guess we just, does anyone have a, have a nomination?
I, I, we have that one.
I think we're gonna take care of that on the, on the actual.
Oh, oh, okay.
This is just information.
Oh.
We'll take care of that.
Oh, we're doing board comments?
Yes, board comments.
Ah!
It's April fifteenth, actually.
I am great, hi!
Board comments.
Board comments. It's April fifteenth, hallelujah, but your financial, your financial stuff is just getting started, so. Um, I, I would like to congratulate a lot of our educational things that have gone to state and different things, and they've done really well. NHD did well, had some people that qualified, Skills USA, so we have a lot of our, um, educational, um, competitions happening right now. And those are fun and exciting, um, so congratulations to those, and then best wishes to those that haven't gone yet. Um, let's see, it's middle of April and the year is just flying by. I'm excited to see how everything boils down from the legislature. I think it's gonna be interesting to see, to put the nuts and bolts to the things that people talk about, um, and decide on. And then whenever you actually, actually make it work, I think it becomes very interesting. Um, just excited for, uh, the rest of the, the year, it's gonna go fast. There's a lot of things that'll be happening, lots of, um, field trips and changes, and, um, it's just, this is a very busy time of year, so hang on tight.
Mr. Khan? I just wanted to update the board, you know, I'm a big advocate for the SB nine. So I've been going door to door and talking to, um, the community about it. Um, like I said, Mike and I went on KSCQ and did an interview with Scott Terry. That'll be airing tomorrow, um, ninety-two point nine at noon. I forgot the other two days, but I know, well, we'll put that reporting on tomorrow. Um, I've been presenting at local meetings about SB nine, answering any questions anybody has. I'm receiving great, um, feedback from the community. Um, one, and this was just funny, and I laughed because they said, well, if you try to move graduation on a Friday, and if you move it to a Friday, then I'll vote. So I, 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 I told them, we're working very hard on that and trying to accommodate, you know, future graduations on the weekend. But we have to be, um, accommodated with other high schools, like areas graduating. So I, I wanted to just joke with Mr. Coker earlier, but he wasn't feeling good, he probably would have let it give me a good answer. Um, let's see, what else? Um, talking about the high school, I've been getting a lot of positive feed, feedback on the facelift. Um, and the, when you first walk in on the backside, um, administration did post the pictures of the remodel. Um, what my daughter tells me is the kids are very excited and they just feel something positive's gonna happen. Um, the outgoing seniors feel a little disappointed, but, um, I told them, you know, they're welcome to, to come back as alumni and, and take a look at it. Um, I know with everything that was discussed about AP classes, et cetera, I did address my concerns with Mr. Coker. Um, I'm a bad advocate also for life skills class. Um, I feel that every senior at one time, first or second semester, should take that class before graduation because you can be very smart. But then comes the time when you need to fill out a loan application, any type of application, do an interview. And, um, not knowing, you know, why, what's collateral, what do I have to put down? Um, why are you being mean to me, um, when they're wanting a loan? I, I just feel that it's, it's also very important that our students learn the necessities of life. Um, and I know we do have one in place at the high school, and Mrs. Zimmerman's doing a great job on that. Um, I just wish that it was, um, a requirement that all students took, um, to get prepared for their, to help them get prepared for the rest of their life. That's all I have.
Thank you. As well as?
Um, I just, uh, actually just wanted to extend, um, my thanks to the Beck family for coming. Uh, and like I said, taking care of all of the kids in our community and not just their own. I think, uh, in this day and age, that's a rarity, and, uh, I really have to commend, uh, the district for taking advantage of, of outreach because, uh, I think it's all on deaf ears in other places, and it's a missed opportunity. So definitely kudos to the district for plugging in with them, and I think that's gonna continue to just be more fruit on the tree. Um, but very grateful to them. Uh, the second thing is, I just wanted to, uh, definitely took my hat to Patrick for his canvassing. He was talking to me about that, like, the day we got off the car from the SB nine. And, uh, I, uh, definitely, he's been out and about really trying to get the word out. And I think we, as board members, have to make sure we do our due diligence. And, and, you know, as parts of the community, but most importantly, as parts of the district ourselves, as teachers, as administration, and as, uh, you know, all, we all have a lot of different acts. Um, and I think if we get out there and let people know it's not an increase, we let people know that it really is for the maintenance of our schools, and it's vital. We, we need that to survive and operate. If people understand those two items, I think most people are more than willing to, um, to, to vote, you know, to approve it. But, um, you know, it's the details, like, you have to mail it in, you have to sign it, you have to follow the directions. Please, no, there's not a voting rate to go to the polls. So it's our responsibility as parts of this, um, organization to get out there and be proactive like Patrick. So thank you for leaving me alone. Um, and. Um, and then, um, last, I just wanna say, you know, spring has hit us really quickly, and there's a lot going on. Testing stuff, stuff incoming, and kind of, I think, a thing as we go, um, spring activities. And so I, I wanna just really encourage us not to just kinda slide by and try to get to the end, although we're all kinda holding on to our seats and applying by our pants. But, um, I, I really wanna encourage us to continue to push to the very end, to better our students, and, um, and to work to, you know, when we go to the classroom or to our job, that we're really working to try to, working toward that improvement every day. It's not, oh, we might be the standard quota, or at the end of the year, let's just screech, and we really need to be pushing to the very end. There's a reason that there's enough, a set number of calendar days. So I'd really encourage all, I know everybody's tired, but we've gotta keep pushing. Um, and then, uh, you know, lastly, I just wanna say, I think I'm just hearing more and more positive. I really appreciated your feedback about the K five plus, because I was very disappointed in that. Um, but when we even hear the details behind it, um, I, I really appreciate you being so transparent about it, because they, it just makes sense. Because on the surface you hear, oh my gosh, what are we doing, why aren't we doing that? And then when you hear the details behind it, it just, I think it, it helped me as a parent understand, because I was very upset about it. Um, and as a community, I think when we can hear all the details behind it, it's the responsible answer right now. So we don't have to like it, but, you know, with all the cards out there, we, that's, that's the right decision, so. Thank you for going into that, and, uh, so let's keep on the good fight.
Thank you. Mr. Bush, President?
Thank you, um, as everyone's mentioned, the school year is coming to a, a close here quickly. Next month we'll be meeting and, and going to graduations, and it's always, um, um, a fun time. It's, it's, uh, amazing that it's gone by as quick as it has. I would also like to reiterate the importance of SB nine. Um, if anybody wants a flyer, I've got some flyers here too. Um, I think it's vital for, um, our community's future that, uh, that we support this and, um, get the message out there that it's important to our school district, but, um, our school district is not an isolated, uh, um, business or operation here in our community. It affects all our community, affects our, our students, um, our future here in this community. So it's, it's a very important, uh, um, election, and, and please participate. If you want more information, go to our website, uh, there's lots of information there. And, uh, we're visiting with one of your board members, um, or administration. And, um, I think that's all I have, thank you.
Yes, sir. We're at the portion of our, our reading where we have voted out the comments. In this round, if you tell me we are no, one wanting to speak, so we'll move on to item number seven, action items. A, consent, agenda approval.
Um, the first item that we have for, um, approval is our checks written for the month of, um, March. We have, um, checks written in the month of March seeking approval is two million, seven hundred eighty-two thousand, seventy dollars and twenty-seven cents. Um, we also have, um, under item B, the budget adjustment request. We have, um, our instructional materials, um, back in February, I asked for, um, approval for budget carryover. One of the things that I did not, um, look into was, this last year was with the first year that they allowed us to do an estimated budget carryover or cash carryover in our initial budget. And so when I was looking at the numbers that I gave you, um, to ask for approval, one of them, um, for instructional materials was an increase. Um, I asked for eighty-eight thousand, which was the budget balance, um, the cash balance at the end of last year. Well, we had estimated, and Ted gives us the estimated numbers for our cash. And so they had us input a ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollar number, which was over our cash amount. So we actually need to ask for a reduction of seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars to instructional materials. And then, um, the thirteen thousand, the transportation, um, that one goes hand in hand with the, um, contract. We asked, I think, um, it was a twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollar rental fee, which is the fee that, um, for the purchase of a new bus. The actual, um, new amount is twenty thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, and so that's what we're asking for approval, um, of an increase in the transportation budget in order to pay the toyota for their, um, new bus. Um, our debt service, um, fund is the fund that the, um, state of Mexico, um, grants us for, um, in order to have money to pay back on the bond sales that we have. And so we had a little bit of, um, we needed a budget cleanup for that, just so that our, um, we pay a reappraisal fee to the state for all the property taxes that we get, and we wanna make sure that we always have enough funds in that account to cover that. And so we're transferring money, we're not increasing or decreasing, we're just shifting the money around so that it's in the right place to cover the costs that we have in place there. And then also under the debt service fund, um, Ted, in their initial budget last year, failed to put in our initial revenue numbers. And so now we have to borrow them into place in order for them to be there once, if it's not in the initial budget. And so I'm seeking approval for the, um, our, to increase our debt service, um, which will end up in its cash carryover for next year because our first, um, bond payments take place in, on August the first. We have to have them to the state of, um, actually to New York Bank, um, on August the first. And so this will actually go into a cash carryover, but we do need a budget in for this year. And so the, those are the bars and the checks written that I am seeking approval for today.
Any donations?
No donations, and no awards or bids and proposals.
No conflict of interest, supportive interest. So just A and B?
Yes.
Okay, I will seek, uh, motion for approval and a consent agenda approval of, subject to one, A and B, financial reports and budget adjustments.
How about?
Does anyone have a motion of second?
Second.
Motion, second by Mr. Khan. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, I would like to make a comment I felt to make earlier in my board comments. Uh, and I even had it written down, blessings to the business office and, uh, Mr. McCain for all the work on the budget and finances with the governor signing the budget, and I know things are crazy, and I just wanted to, I felt to mention that earlier, and thought this was an appropriate time to try and make up that.
Yes, well deserved, thank you.
Thank you.
Our motion is seconded. All those in favor, so you can either say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed?
I just had a quick question.
Motion?
No, I, I have a strong discussion.
Sorry.
All right.
What will be the next one? Instead of just pick one?
All right, I'm trying to be aggressive. I just, so what do we pay UNM for?
Um, the medical, UNM medical? Um, it is for, uh, the, uh, one of our special ed students, it was the, um, the eight-year-old specialist.
Got it. Um, thank you.
I'm new, graduated as new for two years.
Sorry, that was competition for me, it's a medical group, like, um.
They have to use a conflict of interest as opposed to the Dr. Diaz.
Do you do transportation?
Nothing at this time, except for the contract down below.
Nothing at this time except for the contract envelope.
Okay. One to be, consideration approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools two thousand nineteen, twenty calendar. Motion?
Motion.
Dr. Diaz made a motion to our second?
Okay.
Is one of the negative seconded? Any discussion or questions? Are you sure? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated School Behavior Specialist Position. Let's take a motion?
Motion.
Is one of the negative?
Second.
Speaking by Mr. Khan. Any discussion?
I do want to just say to our social workers that aren't here right now, that that's on your radar, you guys are working to work on those caseloads. And if you do need to hire another one, you're going to be working on them. So I just want to make sure that they know that we did not hear them or understand that they're, they're in need there also.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both? Motion passes. Third D, consideration approval of the resolution authorizing preliminary determination regarding general obligation bonds.
Motion.
Should Diaz make a motion?
Second.
Second, Miss Bondelegro. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. E, consideration approval of the Silver Consolidated School Resolution Number eighteen six, a resolution supporting membership in the Southwest Regional Education Cooperative Number ten.
Motion.
Dr. Diaz made a motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Khan is seconded? Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Diaz, are you sure you're using this hour? Dr. Diaz, just to
I noticed that you were writing with me and we're like, we're this far apart.
All right. F, consideration of approval of the resolution to establish reasonable notice to the Book of the Wabak meetings.
Motion?
Second.
Mr. Khan made a motion, here's my second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. G, consideration approval of resolution of revisions to the Toyota Transportation two thousand eighteen, nineteen West Contract. That's the four hundred and twenty-three dollar increase.
Correct.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Miss Bondelegro, do I have a second? Second, Mr. McMillan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. H, consideration approval of the two thousand nineteen NMSBA Scholarship Program nomination. After looking at the nominations, I would nominate letter C for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Second by Miss Bondelegro. All those in favor of letter C moving on, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Motion passes, so you notify them that letter C. And the last one, aye. Consideration and approval of the Online Resource Handbook of Special Education Procedures, presentation by Ms. Hopwood. I'll seek a motion?
Motion.
Dr. Diaz, a motion, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan, any discussion? Ms. Hopwood, thank you again for doing that hard work. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Now on to future meetings and important agenda items. Next, because the work session, we have a board meeting, May twentieth, two thousand nineteen. Do we have anything that needs to carry over from this meeting to that meeting?
That doesn't mean no, that just means we're all ready.
School Law Conference, June fourth, Albuquerque, Leadership Retreat, we have those coming up. I, I will attend one of those, Mrs. Renaldis, I'll let you know.
I'm planning on attending the Leadership Retreat, okay.
And then the annual committee, Embassy Suites Albuquerque.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Question for you, I think we mentioned earlier, do we need to look at a special meeting sometime before May twentieth, regular meeting? Or is that something that we can look at in June?
We're gonna have to wait, I know.
Hurry up and wait.
Yeah, because we'll have to approve the calendar as well as my budget in the summer.
So will you let me know when we're going to do that?
Text, not email. Text, text or call me. Thank you.
Thank you. We have to talk about our leadership, I mean, our board retreat as well, correct? That'll happen obviously in the summers, we've got a lot of work we need to discuss. All right, I have no more comments. So item ten, we need limited executive session and limited personnel matters. And you have to, superintendent, you have to board and need to counsel and advise regarding the investigation, certified employees with superintendent, media commentary, efforts related to same specific employee movements and regarding superintendent. Should that be further evaluation informed? From the book? Mrs. Renaldis, you think?
Yes. Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bondelegro?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
And Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Thank you all for attending.